Evening, everyone on Zoom and here in the audience. It's our March 1st meeting. That is absolutely astonishing that it's March, which means it's budget season. That's the main focus of our workshop tonight, but we do have a report from our short-term rental ad hoc committee, some announcements and some board business to do as well until we get to the meet with the budget discussion. So first opportunity to request a vote to modify or add agenda items. Any changes? Hearing none. And also as how this will have public comment at the at the end in which you can cover any topic that we discuss or any other you'd like to. So announcements tomorrow night is our joint session with Nelsonville and Phillips Town at Phillips Town Town Hall regarding Central Hudson. Because we are now having to have to combine it with the town board's monthly meeting, there will be some business first. There's a short public hearing and then another couple of small items of business and then the public utility law program will present on their findings and the PSC findings related to the Central Hudson billing debacle. So I imagine 7:15 ish, can't be sure. That's tomorrow night at 2:83 or 5:00?
2:38.
2:38, 83, 38, 238 Main Street. Also, big news. We are, the aqueduct work looks to be beginning in the next two to three weeks. We had an onsite pre-construction meeting with the D P on Monday, Tuesday, Monday, I think. And some, some basic things for people to know. We don't know exactly the day yet that work will begin, but as soon as we know these details, we'll obviously communicate them out to the public and we will get in touch with the folks who live adjacent to the site directly, but things that everybody should know. It's that sweeping open space that's on Fish Gill Road near the town garage. You see the aqueduct building at the pinnacle of each end. The work areas are in there. Should not be, there shouldn't be a lot in the road. There will be a little work in the road closer to the town garage where an old that where an old valve needs to be removed, but most of the work will be off. So there will be at times when there's work being down the road and vehicles are moving in and out of the site. You can expect some traffic slowdown, but the most, most of it should not impact traffic a whole lot. And did I say this will extend about three months? So it will be a, be good to get it over before summer comes. So more as we know it. Judge Jones Work is the chair of our working group, our ad hoc working group on short-term rentals. Then it's an update where we are.
Okay, I know you guys have a lot of other things to do today, so I have limited our discussion to really one point that you guys discussed last time and have a few updates on some of the other points and then we will save the rest for later. So this heading does suggest by the required deadline, but it's literally the four points that I'm going to talk about.
I will read them out loud and we'll add them to the staff notes for the meeting.
So just these four points that you have are the four points we're going to go over. These are outstanding items, the main outstanding items from your last discussion that we had on February. The, some of them are very quick, A, C, and D, but B is where I think we should focus time on discussing and I have some information for you and some ideas and then you guys can just discuss it. So A, if you recall, there was, we need to align the chapter 100 updates with the chapter 134 zoning better in several key areas. I listed them here. The meeting with Jesse St. Charles was canceled because he
Yes, but we have other people working on it.
Yes, but he is back on track now and he's let me know if he's going to meet with me as soon as he can. So that will, we'll have an update next about that.
I have begun, I've gone through 134 and sort of redlined the places of overlap and had, we'll have Jesse take it and double check my work. So we kept it rolling while he was
Oh, okay. Great. Well, and I also have several areas, weird areas that you might not have seen that I noticed, though we can, I can just triple check that for you. Okay, let's skip, the second topic is parking for now. Let's skip that and I'll do your other two little updates. The issue of shared driveways, if you recall, was something we discussed last time. The question was right now in the current law, the village allows short-term rental permits to be pulled or replied for by people who have a shared driveway as long as all the parties to the shared driveway write a letter, certified notarized letter saying that they give permission for this to be used as short-term rental. And the question that the, my committee and myself in particular had was do we want the village to even allow that at all? Do we want the, will this sort of allowing people to have a notarized letter and potentially embroil the village in private lawsuits between two parties that we otherwise wouldn't be in, which didn't seem like a great idea. So I have a question out to John first and it was a late, late in the game question. So he hasn't got back to me yet, so I'll let you guys know. But in the meantime, I did do a little bit of research on this area and it seems clear that to me that the lawsuits about this particular thing shared use driveways are like super common and they're becoming more and more common when it has to do with short-term rentals. You can see, see news articles. So it is hitting an area of concern, like the concern is legitimate. Whether having a notarized letter would protect the village from that is a, is a question that John will have to answer. The, as far as I understand it, easements derive from use and that's the problem here is that the use of the drive and they're also very particular to each deed. They're, they're all different. It doesn't mean one person's easement might be different than another person. So we can't write a law that would cover every, but we can't like cover ourselves for every situation basically. So the use in most of the cases that I saw that when I researched that people were arguing over whether short-term rentals are business use by nature or not, because a lot of easements have a residential access for residential use. And so those are, that's still being played out. It's one of these things that is like, we're not going to know the exact answer, but we need to get the professional advice and kind of follow it, in my opinion. So that will be for next time.
John is out of the office tomorrow and Friday, so you won't hear back from him until next week or out of, as of tomorrow midday.
Can I ask you a question? The, the reports, news reports and so on about this, is it concerning mostly villages or other jurisdictions kind of getting entangled in?
No.
It was just that
suing each other?
Yeah, as far as I could tell, I couldn't find ones where there was a case like ours could possibly be. So that would be an area to investigate. But again, most of the, it's common to have people sue each other over shared driveways for all sorts of reasons and you know, short-term rental uses are relatively new. So they'll kind of protecting ourselves from the what, what ifs. I guess it's more than what is now.
Great. We just don't want to get involved in all of this.
Well, I think, I was thinking about this and I think you guys should think about it in terms of, we want to be sort of welcoming and fair to people who live in the village who would like to, to engage in this activity to supplement their income. That's like a good thing to do, but on the other hand, it's not like our primary goal to, to enable them to do this. It's not, it's a privilege. It's not a right. And so I think you're within your rights and you should think about the rest of the taxpayers and what they would have to bear to allow these people, the, the honest and normal business owners should do this. So it's, it's just going to be a balancing and it's for you guys to discuss.
Well, I, I wonder, can like lawsuits against the village for not allowing, like for excluding people because of something like that, could that be another problem we need to consider?
It's possible. I mean, John will know more about that.
The, the likelihood that anyone sues over anything is always, it's always possible that someone's going to sue on a topic. But, but like, does it, what, what is the risk that, that we're willing to?
I can tell you again, my unprofessional, totally the, this idea that we, that we put in the new update where we clearly state that short-term rental permit is a, is a privilege that the, that was not otherwise legal in the village at all. And it's not a right kind of, it's supposed to indemnify you from people who are already, who think they have a right to do it because they have a property here, that because they own property here. Does that make sense? So I don't, I don't know if that would help people not sue you, but it, I think that the, the bigger exposure is people fighting over their shared driveways, neighbors being angry at each other and then pulling the village into
Even if, even if there weren't agreement. People go south for any number of reasons and and then they'll keep being in the middle of
But I will say on the committee, there was a, the, my committee, there was like a disagreement about this because there is a person on the committee that has a shared driveway and was not happy about this. Then so it is like an issue of fairness in some ways. But the letter, the notarized letter that's now required might take care of that problem, you know, so it might be a way to allow some people to do it as long as they, their neighbors or their shared driveway people are okay with it. And maybe that's enough.
Let's see what, what John says and see if he proposes. I would, I would want him to advise on content, obviously, and what would, what, what are important elements to include if there were to be a notarized letter? We need to make sure that these points are addressed in your letter. I'm, I'm, I am, I'm very hesitant about this topic for all the reasons that you've said, but I think we do need John to hear from John.
Okay. So the other topic is the enforcement of worst-case offenders. If you guys remember the last time, this idea of what happens if people you know, sort of engage enforcement and then start accruing fines, but don't stop the activity. You know, end up for Judge Costello and then how, and then they just keep accruing fines. What, what's the village's ultimate recourse? And that question is still out to him. Hi Travis. But the, I, so I will let you know when he gets his office gets back to me, but the I did look up the law, at least the New York State law pertaining to this fines restitution and reparation. It's part of the consolidated laws of New York. Article 420. And it seemed, I am not a lawyer and it's hard to understand, but it seemed like it, especially in civil matters, that lean against the property is a possibility instead of jail time. It did seem pretty clear that if jail time, it would be 15 days would be the maximum you could do. But if we wanted to avoid that, which we all want, wanted to, and I gave that clear to Judge Costello in my letter to him. I think it seems at least promising that we could do that instead. And so we'll know more when
Yeah, we talked about the fact that, that fiscal impacts will be the, the greatest deterrents in this, in this local law.
Right, okay. Okay, so finally and lastly, the off-street parking requirement issue. If you recall, last time I communicated to you all that the committee was split on the issue of off-street parking requirement. A couple of people felt like there should be no requirement for off-street parking to pull a permit. A couple of people, including myself, strongly felt that we should have one parking space per guest room as hotels are required to have and as current tourist homes in the code are required to have. And as we talked about it at the committee, people kind of agreed with some extensions. The majority agreed to, to recommend one parking spot per permit as a sort of middle ground. The, the logic behind that was it would help alleviate some of the parking. I don't know what you want to call this, help mitigate the, the parking pressures in certain neighborhoods by at least having one spot provided.
So in this scenario where we've ruled out unhosted short-term rentals and it's all hosted, that would mean a property would need two parking spaces, one for the resident and one for the guest, right?
Well, it doesn't say that in the law right now, but that's something
That's the implication.
I mean, we just want to specify that if that was the case. But the, we left off last time to remind you guys, talking about that issuing, because you guys were not in agreement on it. And you, I was, you asked me to look into how hotels are treated in, in the code. And if the idea is we want to treat these like hotels in a residential area, it should be some kind of parallel treatment and payment in lieu of parking came up. So I can, if you guys remember, so I can tell you that in our current code, payment in lieu of parking or fee in lieu of parking only applies to B1 and B2. So it, in fact, it expressly is prohibited in R1 and the, there are several other, the, the parking table has several other, what do you call them? Laws governing parking on home occupations in R1, which is, you know, also a similar kind of thing to this. So if you, they, they require, you know, one per, one space per customer, depending on if it's a doctor's office or the, the approved home occupations in an R1 district have certain parking requirements. But they also in our current code suggests that there are, people can't park in the, in the front yard setbacks or side yard setbacks for those home occupations, which I thought was interesting. Our code now was amended in 2001 to say that you have to, if you're applying for a home occupation in, like you're a doctor, running a doctor's office in a residential district, your parking that can satisfy the parking requirement, which was one space for three customers or something, can't be in the front yard or the side yard. So that was speaking, sorry, I'm, you know, in terms of speaking to Eliza's concern about expanding parking or parking all over their lawn or something like that. So in our code, we currently actually have precedent for addressing this kind of thing with businesses in, you know, compatible businesses in an R1 district. But the, the issue of payment in lieu of parking seems pretty clear that it's just in our current code, just B1. So you could, since we're allowing in this update, short-term rentals in B1, you could consider payment in lieu of parking for those short-term rentals in B1. But, and I would suggest you don't consider it in R1 because that would privilege that business over, you know, other home occupations and I, in my opinion, overburden those neighborhoods. But you could consider it just for B1. If you did that, the planning board would have to be engaged, just like you guys do with businesses in, in B1. They'd have to go for the planning board. They'd have to be, that would have to be altered in zoning code and then you, you, the village board would ultimately give permission for that, just like you do for the businesses that have applied for that before here.
What worries me a lot about that thing you've just mentioned. I didn't catch the side yard, front yard exclusion. That drives you more toward backyard backyard payovers. Right now we have, we do have protections regarding impermeable services, but the idea that you would drive cars to a backyard and then have backyard parking in the middle of a residential neighborhood is really unappealing to me in terms of neighborhood character.
I have one other thing that kind of came up because I'm working on traffic and vehicles right now and the residential parking you know, plan. And, you know, right now I'm working down in the lower village, but eventually we're, you know, seeing this as something that will probably extend through the whole village. But if people have to buy a permit for their home, street parking instead of in lieu of payment, you know, parking, maybe we could have a SDR permit that is an annual fee thing. It's charged at a higher rate than the resident permits, but if you don't have parking on your property, you can purchase one of these resident, or one of these, like a short-term rental street permit for the residential districts. And that would kind of solve that.
Because it would, you could limit those, the number of those.
Limit it and say, well, if it's one per permit, for, for instance, then you charge one per permit. It's a tax on fee that goes with your permit fee. And then you have like a hang tag or whatever for your guest vehicle.
In the residential area or in the, down here?
In the residential. I mean, it could be both because Main Street is going to have permits as well.
But above the latest, you're not on that street.
Not right now. We have, so we're in the process of securing, enabling legislation from our state assembly member and state senator to enact our capacity to be able to expand the residential district because we I think all reasonably consider that once resident parking goes in, in one neighborhood, it's going to push parking to other neighborhoods. So how do we and activate sort of those residential parking space protections over time? And I think about that slightly differently, that, that the resident parking permits are intended to reserve spaces for, for residents, not for
Right, we're cutting a 40 total through the whole year. So it's not like a huge amount, not.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't say to a, to an inn or a bed and breakfast, we'll give you, we'll give you resident parking permits in another neighborhood.
Now, it's, I sort of agree. I mean, speaking of town, but the, the idea that we need to think about is that the park, parking in our village is a resource and do we want to give that, you know, it's a finite resource. And the way that we divvy up who gets to use that resource is, I mean, I think it should privilege residents, right?
I agree.
And it's, if we have to think about if we're giving other people access to that, we'll get, we're taking it away from residents or we're making it smaller for residents. And that's something we want to avoid that in my, I think. I understand you're saying it's 40.
But if, but right. And if you think about the residential parking plan, the whole goal is to privilege the residents and to lock out everybody else. So right now down here, everyone who's coming to Main Street to go shopping for the day is parking all over the side streets, like resident and also Metro North people. All those people are going to be eliminated instantly as soon as this parking plan goes into place and we're right, with enforcement. And so suddenly the residents They, they will be on Main Street and encouraged to pay. Well, on weekdays, they won't be paying. On weekdays, they will not be paying free. It's only going to be paid for on weekends and holidays. So those we, we're already privileging and, and creating space that's not currently there for the residents where we're separating that and cutting it out. And there's going to be plenty of room for residents.
But also required, meaning 20% well, not right now.
Right.
We're required to keep 20% open, free public parking in the district. Whether, whether the district is defined by the boundaries that are established right now, or whether it's expanded, 20% has to be maintained. And so my feeling is that's, that short-term rental folks who don't have driveways, that's the, in an R1 or in a residential district, say, we have very limited parking. It is this, this street, which is free residential, excuse me, free public parking. That's what's available. And if there isn't parking for you, you're going to need to park in a municipal lot and pay. I mean, we I think, I think our goal, our goal for privileging resident parking is an important one. I don't know what others think.
I absolutely think we have to protect, which the residents first. There's also, you know, I mean, there's all of Northern.
Right, that's the 20% I'm talking about.
I mean, yeah, two little, maybe at the beginning, but I mean, Northern is sort of this, this street that anybody who's parking on garden, church, whatever, it's only like, how could it be?
Right, but in relationship to this conversation and SDRs, it's a choice between allowing people who have no driveways to get a permit or not. So, and we're saying that if they're not paying for their parking permission, the way a hotel might, because that was the original logic that we were kind of questioning was like, if, if hotels can pay in lieu of parking 250 bucks for a spot per, per bedroom or whatever, then a short-term rental in theory should be able to too. But now you've kind of uncovered that we can't do that in R1.
Well, you can do it however you want. But it doesn't seem advisable to do it in R1, just because, first of all, R1 is where the, the parking resources right now, except for down below the stoplight are it's like a protective measure. They're not maybe a problem right now, but you guys have to remember that you're giving X number of 40 permits. They're an unlimited number of permits. If somebody could be living next to somebody who is running an SDR and has multiple cars parking, you know, 100, we won't know, 200 and some days a year, 365 days if they're there. So we're talking about another an added layer of parking at like, you know, 30 spots in, in the village or 40 spots in the village. So it's not like a small, it might be small for me if there's no, I don't have a direct neighbor or people across the street, but for people, we're trying to mitigate the impact, the potential impact of this activity, this business activity in these districts. And it seems like requiring a parking spot and actually having that be, you know, taking cars off the street is the best way to do that. And if it means that some people can't engage in this activity, well, that also is a natural limiter of the activity. So it's again, I don't think fairness to allow everyone to participate in that, that activity should be our goal, unfortunately. I mean, people will be mad about it, but I don't think that's our, our goal is not fairness that everybody should participate. It's it should be one of, we can't prejudice it, but if we have a good reason to require parking, we should be aware of this.
But my point has always been that we're creating multiple sort of guardrails already. One guardrail is that it's limited to 40 permits, which right now there's no guardrail whatsoever that's being followed, right? The second guardrail is this parking, you know, residential parking system that's going into place, that's going to prevent all of the day tourists and people coming and going for shopping from being able to park in those areas. So we've got these guardrails going up and this is like throwing in another guardrail, which I wonder if it's necessary. It's just, seems like we're putting too many protections up to like exclude people when it may not be necessary.
I mean, if you're, if you're contemplating, and I, I am mindful that we have an hour-long budget discussion tonight, so we could, let's spend like four more minutes on this and then we're going to need, need to reconvene on the topic. If you're purchasing property with the intent to operate short-term rental, what's part of your business calculus is can I provide off-street parking? I mean,
But most, we're not wanting people to purchase properties for that.
No, but we're trying to, we're trying to establish a point of protection for the village anticipating that that possibility that people will want to operate going forward. So we're trying right now to establish the boundaries and that doesn't seem an unreasonable, to me, it doesn't seem an unreasonable boundary. What to others?
I think it doesn't seem like an unreasonable boundary to not give a permit for
To require off-street parking for your guests.
Yeah. I mean, I think I think I agree with that. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to, to your point that it's, you know, it's it is not our job or our goal to like make this business possible. We just need to make sure that we legislate properly the fact that it's going to happen and the people who do it. And I don't, I agree. I mean, the parking in this village is just such a it's such an issue already. I don't think someone who wants to do business should then be able to Well, I don't think they should have a permit. A parking permit, a residential parking for the guest.
Yeah.
But what about the payment, like, and all those?
Yeah, I also, I mean, that
If we're treating them as a business, then they should get equal rights as a business.
I suppose, but I, but I go back to like the kind of concept of like, you know, you bought a house to live in.
It's a business use in a residential neighborhood, which is different than a straight-up business use. We have, we have a municipal lot, we have two municipal lots, right? There's one on Lower Main. There's this one, there's the one in front of Mayor's Park three and 20% of the residential parking district in whatever size it ends up being will be required to be 20% free public parking. That's
Yeah, but that's, how does that risk, how does that relate to the choice between letting a house with no driveway, whether or not we let them apply for SDR? Like, how does that relate?
Well, but I think that has to be part of their own business decision if they're gonna, if they want, I mean, they have to take into account that they are living in a situation that may not support an SDR.
They had one bedroom. You, you couldn't run an SDR in our village because you have to be on, have a living, you have to be onsite and living there. So if you have one-bedroom house, that'd be pretty uncomfortable. Well, you couldn't, it, it would be illegal to do it because you would have to have a veteran inspector and you'd have to be living outside. You can't live in your camper. Right, so not everyone is going to be able to participate in that equally because everybody has different properties, you know.
But that's, I mean, that was But that's, I mean, that was, that's by design, and you bought what you bought, right? I mean, we can't, we have no control over.
Right.
Your property.
Well, and to the point of equal treatment of businesses, I would say that home occupations in a residential zone, which is in, like, which is, they are not allowed to have a parking waiver, they have to provide this parking, it can't be in the front yard, in our current code. So if we're comparing apples to apples in a residential zone, I'm not saying it's the same use, like a doctor's office or a design studio or something, but it's.
I think it's a really great parallel, the, the goal of that section of the code was to ensure that businesses operating residential districts had, um, that their impacts were mitigated with measures like requiring off-site parking, off-street parking, requiring hours of business, right? All, all of these, all of these things. Um, and it's, it's a, this is a, a business operating in a residential neighborhood. I don't think that's an unreasonable parallel, I think it's the perfect parallel.
Well, then do it. It's also, it's, it's not like a doctor's office, it's even less than perfect. Makes it better, because you don't have people coming and going, and you've got, on a weekend, you've got people parking, just one person coming and going, you know, you don't have like hourly people coming and going, or three people coming a day, you just have at least one person per day.
Right. So. Well, I'll also remind you that this is most, a lot of people will be renting, you know, some people have two cars, because they've got some of these cars on the street already, this is, this was like a moderate, a moderate compromise. Because again, hotels, current tourist homes in our code, which are going to change, they all require one space per room. So if you're renting out four bedrooms, you would need four spaces of off-street parking in current, currently under the code, right? So for hotels or bed and breakfast or tourist homes, these kinds of, of things, we're already being more lenient, I feel like, that's what I.
Because you're not requiring every bedroom, you could, in theory, so.
We're not being unreasonable, nobody has five parking spaces in, in there.
Right. So you need feedback from John on.
Yeah.
Other.
What is our adding, I'm just waiting.
Let's, let's sit with this, think about it. We'll come back together, let us know when you have what you need from John. Um, calendaring for the next few weeks is tight, but make it work somehow.
Okay.
It may be, it may be that we have to take small pieces at a time.
Well, I think that's, it's easier to do that during budget season than.
Okay. Um, I feel like you have the feedback that you need.
Yeah, I think so, I do, I will ask you guys next time to think about the two things for parking. One is, um, did we agree on exemption for one-time permit applicants, so people who are doing the, the one-time seven or fourteen day, until like for West Point graduation? Do they need to also have this parking requirement, or are they exempt from the parking requirement? Um, that was a point of discussion last time, and the second thing is, um, people without a driveway, the, the idea that they could pay and rent a space, like Hudson House does, or rented from the village, or rented a space from a private homeowner, an off-street space, and provide proof of that off-street space, that's their designated parking for their guests in lieu of, like, if they don't have a driveway or not enough parking space on their property. Those are the two questions that are worth outstanding.
That you put that forward.
Which would be a way to have people who don't have driveway or only have one parking space for themselves to participate, um, and wouldn't add to the impact on the street, and would be sort of a.
A compromise on the point you're raising.
So, yeah, I mean, it's very similar, and then would the village be willing to allow that in the municipal parking lot, for instance? Because we're doing it for Hudson House or for other businesses on, for that business district, so.
Well, anyway, that's, we'll come back to parking next time, and then hopefully just tie these last four things up. And once we do that, I think we're, we're ready to get a clean copy of this law, I'll sit with Jeff to do the procedure section, and then we can once that's in good shape, you guys can schedule a public hearing, so just these few little.
The few little and the very hardest.
Okay.
Acknowledging Travis as a member of your committee who's joined us, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks a lot. Okay, let's pound through this other business quickly, so that we can get Michelle uh, at the table with us and then home. So we have, um, a new, after, after having identified, um, potential members for the Recreation Commission, who were, we were very excited to have, they are not citizens and therefore do not qualify, so we have another, um, applicant, Matt DeGraff, who lives down on Market Street. Um, another guy with small kids who has a lot of interest in how our perks get used going forward. Um, he is recommended by the Chair of the Rec Commission to be appointed, and I would like to make a motion to, and he is a citizen, this we confirm. I'd like to make a motion to.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Welcome, Matt. Okay, the next, um, is related to, and I want to clarify for the public record. Um, there are, in the backup, there is, uh, an old version of this resolution and a newer version. Um, in error, um, we are working from, I'm going to talk about the topic in a second, but we are working from, I'm trying to see what.
The easiest place.
Well, but they've got the same document number on, so they're going to be hard to. We are working from the document that has, as its last paragraph on the first page, whereas the village is consulting engineer. That is the resolution we're working from, we will adjust, um, what is online, so that the correct record is there, so this goes back to thirty-seven Fair Street, which is the, um, the old Impelitiary, um, garage, is the new fabulous um, deal-like roofline. Um, behind that property was a small chunk of village property, a survey, I don't know if you can bring that up online, Jeff. Um, we all did a site visit, looked at it, um, on, on the advice of the previous board, we had our village engineer look at it to determine, um, it, that it abuts the highway department, and there's a drop-off down to the highway department. The previous board had concerns about the need for a retention wall, retaining wall. Um, our village engineers did a steep slope assessments, assessment by our code and recommended that we did not. Um, so it has gone to the planning board, um, for review, for a lot line adjustment. This will take a, it's, it's really lost space back there that the village doesn't have use for, because it's landlocked between properties and the, and the garage, and there is a very high hall, um, excuse me, height, the slope. So our attorney has prepared, um, a negative declaration for, um, under seeker. Um, no negative environmental impact, and therefore no additional environmental review required. So the resolution we have in front of us, um, identifies us as declaring a surplus. Um, declaring ourselves lead agency, finding a negative declaration and agreeing to the sale. Questions before we move into resolution? She's been, Ms. Abney has been very patient.
Yes.
I think it's super cool, so. Um, so this is a motion authorizing, need to sign the necessary documents to complete the sale, so if someone else would read the resolution into the record.
Can do it. Um, I make a motion to approve resolution number five dash twenty twenty-three of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the sale of real property. Um, presented by myself, seconded by, weep, some, what? Um, Trusty Woods, uh, today, whereas Nina Abney, Operation of Nina's Studio LLC is owner of the Artist Studio Residence located at thirty-seven Fair Street, Cold Spring, New York, with a tax map identification number of forty-eight dot one dash one dash twenty-four dot one, and has requested to purchase a strip of land adjacent to the rear of her lot, that quarters the large highway department garage parcel currently owned by the village, and whereas the subject lands to be conveyed are a portion of land owned by the village with a tax map identification number of forty-eight dot eight dash one dash twenty-four dot, dot one, with the conveyance limited to consist of approximately four hun, four thousand four hundred eighty square feet as further described in the meets and bounds description attached as Exhibit A, um, wherein the village parcel, and whereas the village board has declared this village parcel as surplus, it is not needed for any municipal use, is not used for highway purposes, and does not serve as or is used for sewer or water purposes, has no environmental or recreational or parkland component, and is not used for the administration of fire or police purposes, and whereas the village, village's consulting energy, engineer, Han Engineering reviewed the site and determined that, that the construction of a retaining wall was not needed to the west of the adjacent boundary line, and.
They're just.
I would just think, you think, um, and whereas the sale of this village parcel will limit the village's liability exposure, maintenance responsi, responsibilities, and return the parcel to the tax roll, and whereas Nina Abney has offered to purchase the village parcel for fair and adequate consideration, which offer price is supported by the town assessors fair market value, and whereas the sale price would not be less than twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and no cents, and whereas the proposed sale of the village parcel is an action subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the village board has determined the sale of this small parcel is an unlisted action for which the village has reviewed and completed a short environmental assessment form pursuant to CECPRA. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board declares itself the lead agency with respect to CECPRA review of the sale of the village parcel, since there are no other agencies that have authority to approve the sale, and let it be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby issues a negative declaration attached for this proposed action under CECPRA, as the sale will not result in any significant adverse, adverse environmental impacts and an environmental impact statement is not required, and let it be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby determines that the sale of the village parcel is in the public interest of the residents of the village, and be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute any and all required agreements and documentation to effectuate the sale of the village parcel, including but not limited to the deed and necessary transfer documents subject to the review and approval as to form and, and content by the attorney for the village, and by order of the Village Board of New York, of, of the Village of Cold Spring in New York. Um, it's a roll call vote, I believe.
Uh, Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Trusty Woods.
Hi.
Trusty Sarva.
Hi.
Trusty Fatty.
Hi.
And Trusty Fazi, both of you. Passes, uh, this stage by a vote of four ayes with one option.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um, moving other projects forward. You will recall that we, um, thought the guidance of our engineers on three, two related and one separate long outstanding, um, infrastructure issue, um, surveys need to be conducted before those projects can be undertaken, these are the bids for that survey work. Um, so Han wrote, did, wrote the bid, got responses, and has made recommendation to us um, to accept the lowest bidder for each, um, and I think what I'll do is describe each and do a vote per each recommendation. Um, the first is for the, the Fair Street Culvert Project. Um, the survey will be used to design drainage improvements for the Fair Street Culvert, meaning the, um, pipe along Mayor's Park, um, and the Grandview Terrace Drainage Easement next to Mr. Holmes' property. Um, I would, um, any discussion, first of all? Okay, I would move that we accept the bid of Rowan Land Surveying, the LLC, for two thousand nine hundred dollars for that portion of the project.
Okay.
All in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? I say aye, okay, well, this is just the beginning, we better get the numbers from there, get a, get a sense of what the scope is. The next to relate to Mountain Avenue, the intersection of Mountain Avenue and Fish Gill, um, near the school. First is similarly survey, so we understand where the village line runs on that street, because like all other streets in the village, it's a little wacky. Um, and where the, where the curbs are located and where the current, um, drainage is located, et cetera. So again, uh, Rowan Land Surveying was the lowest bidder at two thousand seven hundred, and I would move that we accept that bid.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, and then the next deals with what is underneath Fish Gill and Mountain Avenue, because there are a number of places where the street appears to be collapsing, um, so we need to understand what's happening under the street, and to do that, we need to send cameras down. Um, so this, this is, the last bit is for video inspection and report recommendation. Do identify pipe lengths, manhole locations, conditions of pipes, changes in direction, and approximate depth. Will allow us to evaluate the condition of sewer and drainage pipes at the intersection and determine if sewer or drainage improvements are required as part of the proposed intersection improvement project. The lowest bidder for this was Underground Surveying LLC, um, in an amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty, and I would move to accept that.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Yay, thank you for that. Um, and Michelle will talk, Michelle will give you an update um, on some further discussions we had with Han today regarding spending through this budget year and into next year, uh, planning for next year. Um, okay, last is, last under business is bills.
Nothing to approve that. Three eight forty in the about, I'll put in ten dollars, one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-two cents.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, come on up, Michelle, Michelle Ascolilo is our, um, village accountant, she's going to talk us through, um, the beginning of our budget process tonight, just for, for public education. Um, this is our very first session, it is, this is a very workshop-y night where we throw ideas around. We aren't making any major decisions tonight, we're talking through the landscape of where we are in funding for this year's budget, um, how we get through the rest of this budget cycle, and how we plan for next year. So nothing is set in stone in this budget, this is where we get the basics of the process, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, um, and, um, in the packets, um, is a two, three-page list, um, go through little things, concession plates, questions as they come up, the topics, um, come to mind that are related to, we're after going through it, we can add it in, uh, those are the topics that I thought we should definitely cover, uh, but this is a workshop to talk about anything. Um, twofold, um, like Mayor said, is to start planning for next year's budget and to talk about large projects that should be spent down this year. Um, the first thing we should probably talk about is the tax cap and the tax levy, and it's, it's a situation of which do you decide first? Do you decide how much taxes to levy and then fit the budget into that? Or do you build your budget and then realize how much you need to build? I like to have the conversation now, and, you know, we can decide which way we want it to go.
And then set goals for looking at the budget under different tax scenarios.
So New York State puts in a, a mandate every year that you cannot increase your tax cap by more than two percent or the rate of inflation. Um, that's component number one, uh, this year it's two percent. Second component is if there are taxable value growths in the village, the state gives us a growth factor, that we are allowed to increase our tax levy based on a growth in our tax base, means there's more properties, the properties have improved, things like that. Um, so that's component number two. Component number three, in figuring out the tax cap for us in, in the village, is a carryover amount from the prior year. The past two years, we have not, the village has not levied as the maximum that we could. So they allow you to take a portion of that and levy it as an option in the following year.
Carry it over.
It doesn't carry on in perpetuity, if you don't use it the next year, there's formulas. So when you take those three components together, uh, the village can increase the tax levy by approximately five percent. Um, so it's two percent the tax cap, plus the growth, plus the carryover amount. You know, five percent, this would equate to eighty-eight thousand, an additional revenue for the village.
Those three numbers together, the tax base, the allowable levy and carryover, or eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight thousand one seventy-nine. Uh, the village can levy an additional eighty-eight thousand one seventy-nine, or keep it the same and levy zero additional, and anywhere in between. And anywhere in between. The five percent is not the same as what would be on a tax bill increase. Um it all depends on an individual property's exemptions, um if they're taxable, if that value has changed year to year. So if we did the max, just a framework um for one of the popular condos in the village. Those residents would see a forty five dollar increase for the year if we did the max levy. Um someone who has a property that's two hundred thousand of assessed value would see a hundred and twelve dollar increase. Um in the village, forty eight percent of the tax roll has a taxable assessed value of one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. Twenty five percent is under a hundred thousand, so that tells us that seventy five percent of the people. Will see no more than a hundred and twelve dollar annual raise in their taxes if the village went with the max. You know, there's nineteen percent in the next bracket and then eight percent of the tax rolls over three hundred thousand, um those are just some rough numbers. But the bulk of the village, like I said, would be under that one twelve or under. Any thoughts and questions about the tax levy?
I feel like last year's philosophy was build the budget and then see how much we need to raise it and the goal was to keep it. From raising unnecessarily and that makes good sense to me. Um if if we don't, I mean, we can always use extra funds, uh. But I think we should, we should make the budget appropriate and then consider where we need to raise funds. That's my, I thought about it.
I found it very helpful to look at. I think we looked at three different rates um last year and to see where that where that landed and figure what we could. Um stretch and pull within those ranges, I can't remember, I can't remember what the ranges were that we used, that what the percentages were that we used.
Um I think we started at the top, then we went to half and then we aimed for um a two percent tax bill increase. Um we ended up landing at like one point eight percent. Um you know, these numbers are also a little preliminary, I've reached out to the county um with the taxable assessed value. That they're using right now, but things can change a little bit before the tax roll be in March. You know, so come April, we'll have more firm numbers, but that's how, you know, when we adopted the budget, we were looking at a one point nine percent. Increase, um and then it came down to one point eight because of the minor adjustments.
Um I would like to look at, look at the process in that way again, where we take three rates and. See where we go, were you. Raise your hand, no, just scratching.
But I agree, I think having more information about. Three possibilities, it's helpful, understand?
And then what uh we had done last year to achieve those goals is what could we pull out of the budget that was necessary, but. Could be considered a one-time project and paid from fund balance, you know, um it it wouldn't be. Appropriate to not raise taxes but still have reoccurring expenses come out of fund balance.
Right.
It's not sustainable, um it it won't work long term, so the the state advises against it. It's reasonable to advise against that. You know, but some engineering costs or a paving project or something is appropriate to come out of them.
We did a very loud heating system, we're all listening to. It seems exceptionally loud.
Well, I thought the process last year was was really helpful and we need, and in the end, I think it was fair.
I agree.
It worked for the village and it worked for residents, so we can do that again.
And a lot of the factors will come up in follow-up conversation on what some of the departments are requesting so far for the meeting.
And a pony, I'd like a pony.
I'd like to get the tax levy done first.
Machine, the bars are low for Jeff. Public session. Okay, yes, next item.
We're jumping around a little bit, let's now focus real quick on things that we can spend this year on fund balance. Um so. So there's a a little box on the bottom of your first page that says fund balance. Um based on our audited financial statements. Um you have a fund balance, then you have what we appropriated for the budget in the current year. Um any anticipated changes and then we're on estimating our fund balance to be, so in the general fund. Uh after we allocated three hundred and twenty seven thousand into this year's budget for village-wide repairs. I think that there's gonna be twenty thousand minimum, it's gonna go back into fund balance, there's some health insurance, even though health insurance went up. There's some savings, um and then there's little savings throughout um. The various departments, I think it'll increase, so we're looking at one point five million in the general fund of a fund balance. There's one twenty nine.
That looks like a lot of nine, okay, so the number reading into the public record is one million four ninety nine, seven hundred and twenty.
And that's it, that's my estimate, the audited number is one million eight hundred six seven twenty four.
And that is um, that's the 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 fund you were referring to earlier in terms of taking out.
Fund balance.
Yeah, yeah.
And the general fund, in the water fund, uh the audited amount was nine hundred sixty two thousand, we allocated two hundred thirty six thousand. For dam engineering, for some other engineering projects and for the water meter endpoint replacement. Um so the endpoint replacement project came in a little bit under, but the village is also going forward with the Catskill Aqueduct. So that can come out of fund balance and that's where they anticipated, you know, decreased the fund balance coming in, the bids came in at. I think four seventy nine with all the different, um three seventy nine, three seventy nine with all the different scenarios as a maximum. Um and then you take that into consideration with some savings from the endpoint project. Fund balance for water fund would be approximately three hundred ninety eight thousand seven twenty.
We just realized we haven't offered you folks in the room copies of what we're looking at.
I can imagine all of these numbers.
So would you like a copy to look at while we're?
I just came for the short-term rental parts, so probably drove it off also.
And folks who are joining us online, it is all available on the website, good night, thanks.
And then the sewer fund, we didn't allocate anything for the budget this year for fund balance, audited was two fifty seven. Um there was some engineering projects that Matt doesn't think he'll get to this year, so I think fifteen thousand will go back into fund balance. For an estimated amount of two seventy two, three ninety five, um the numbers may sound large. Um in water and sewer fund, you see how that Catskill Aqueduct ate half the fund balance in one project.
Yeah, well, has to be done.
And general fund is a little high, but we're working on spending down, there was a big influx to the general fund during COVID. Um for projects that were budgeted for and didn't happen and the savings, yeah, like that, we've also talked, excuse me, one of the.
The items Michelle and I talked to the engineers about today is the fact that, you know, we had high hopes for all the things we could get done in terms of. Capital projects in the last year and weren't able to get them done, um and I think a big chunk of that, it was the process of bidding. Um and now we have experience with Han, we've worked with them, I think having them take that process of. Preparing proper bids, working with the contractors to get the bids and make recommendations to us will be a giant time saver that. Pushes some some of our longstanding projects forward, so we'll spend more in the in on engineering this year, paying them for their time. But it will push us forward um on the products we haven't been able to get to and. Getting things out to bid and getting them done just needs to happen, there's a lot of stuff that's deferred.
Right, that kind of speaks to the issue of shortage of staffing and and management, so. Because we couldn't get to doing things like bids for those projects that didn't get done earlier, now we have. Somebody who does it for us, which solves the problem and gets more done at the same time, even though it costs us a little bit more, it's worth it, absolutely.
So I think we should talk about, you know, the ideas and the things that we would really like. To utilize that budget amount, so that three hundred and twenty seven thousand that we budgeted for, that's all fund balance. Um two hundred and ninety five of it was just village-wide repairs and improvement, um so that's the chunk that we should talk about. Um the board just voted on seven thousand in the three things that Han suggested for surveying, um that'll come out of there. If the, there's the engineer road survey that Han proposed, which was about twenty thousand. If that's something to move forward, that could come out of here, I still think that's just a great expense, so so we did begin that project with them. They put a draft forward, we paused considering we being me. And also Laura Bozzi was walking, was working with me on thinking about pedestrian issues. Um asking them how to consider sidewalks in that project and Michelle and I followed up in our conversation today, sort of. Asking them to to pull back, their their.
Their proposal was very paving-based and we do have a lot of paving that needs to happen, but quite a number of those locations have. Underlying problems that need to be addressed, there's no point putting a Band-Aid or putting down asphalt that you tear up later. So they're going to put forward a revised proposal for how they would capture more of the picture. In to help us prioritize project, a more more full, um but it seemed as if it would come in in roughly the same range. Cost-wise for the revised assessment.
They don't really speak to the cost for it, but you have to assume that if it was twenty thousand for a paving assessment that didn't. Touch any other comments, if they're putting more detailed notes, um the cost would go up, it's not more time on. The street per se, like in site visits, but then time spent writing up. Um good night, Judith.
Um. It would not be camera time, right, it's not an underground assessment, it's surface assessment and sort of supposition about, alright, we see this, we see this sinkhole happening here. Here are the possibilities for what it could be, this is what you have to look at further in this location.
Um I also spoke with them about um doing a sidewalk and tree removal RFP. But the removing trees, um it's a much longer process. Uh so to spend down some money, they think that they could bid out a straightforward sidewalk project. And have it poured by May thirty first, um so. Roadways is working on a priority list, we'll send it to Han, they can give us a proposal, what it would be to do the bid, put it out, seal bids, have it come in. And then hopefully have someone come in and do the sidewalks that are really just rip it up and replace it. Um that or leveling that doesn't need stump grinding or tree roots or anything like that um to get moving.
Yes, and for clarity on the trees, obviously we have a tree ordinance, it's a public process around removing public trees. Um Jen Zwark, who was with us a little bit ago, is also the Tree Advisory Board Chair and she is working, she will be working with Han and her recommendations. For where we can reasonably extend the life of a tree with alternate um materials or alternate approaches. Um and what trees are just at the time where they have to come down, um so.
Um right, just to know.
That's sort of the piece part two on sidewalks.
So it'll probably be an RFP this year and then another one next year, um for this year, there is some regular savings. Um for sidewalk supplies and materials, if we couple that with some of this fund balance money, we can get a bigger chunk done at the same. A better value than mobilization and things like that.
Also, I think it speaks to getting our roadways and facilities crew caught up a bit so that they're not struggling against such long. To-do lists from many years of undone work.
Also, part of this, um Mayor mentioned dock lights. Um I think that's roughly fourteen fifteen thousand that would hope to be. Um follow the the bidding process or quotes and then get that moving, um a village hall condition survey. Not sure if that would actually happen this year with the bids.
It may not. I forgot to ask, I forgot to ask Han's day for recommendation.
While we're talking about, you know, sidewalks, there's also storm drains that either. The highway department can do or we can, you know, maybe not a full bid for thirty five thousand like that, but you know, free quotes. Replace a few storm drains, there's. There's about six thousand in the regular budget, if we add another ten thousand, that could just stuff to start chipping away, get two or three of the most. Um needed ones done, full-on replacements.
And that's you would, you would, what you're suggesting is the same that we're doing for sidewalks, is bidding it out and getting it done.
Um I don't, if if we do a full huge like thirty five thousand sealed bid process, I don't think that. Time frame would work, um storm drains aren't as straightforward. Um sidewalks might be, but if there are, you know, two or three, well, Han can recommend a few contractors. We can call them, get basic written quotes, um we've done that before, we've had a couple contractors replace them, um the tricky ones. And again, this would be one that, you know, the road has already been paved or a road that, you know, we're not looking to touch in a few years, but needs to be done. Then there are a few things that we haven't talked about, um one, we talked about it last year, but not recently, the servers for village halls. And the police department, uh they sunset on October of twenty twenty three. Um managed technologies is putting together a formal quote. Real rough, rough between the the labor, the equipment. And upgrading to a virtual server, probably twenty thousand, um this was done, I think, eight to ten years ago. Um so it's time, the the benefit of a virtual server, right now, our servers are backed up. They go down, they'll get repaired, we won't lose anything, but it's gonna take a couple weeks to rebuild them and get us, moving to a virtual server. Is a little more expensive, but if the village goes down for whatever reason, it can come back up in two days. On portions of it, you know, they'd even said if if we did the police first, you could even probably get them up in a day and then get us up in two days.
Also, that's just the direction that to every, every business is going, the world is going, um and it seems to make sense to not keep ourselves in a. In a point where we don't have an upgrade path, so are you suggesting trying to take care of that before? Before May thirty, for take that chunk out and get it done, that seems smart.
So it's gonna have to be done, you know, once everything sunsets, there's no more updates, it's, it's fine.
And how long would it take for them to do that, like the actual labor part and so on?
And waiting for the quote, usually they do stuff, large things overnight or, you know, on a weekend. Um so that it less impact as possible.
And then it thought, I'm asking a question, I frame it as a question, will it buy more real estate upstairs where we now have a big server closet?
I don't think so, because it's still physical equipment. But you pay for an extra cloud somewhere to host the virtual server, so essentially instead of. Right now, the way the server is, every single file is backed up, so you have to rebuild it, we're gonna clone it and put it in a cloud somewhere, so you just. I envision you drag it and drop it.
And it just works.
I'm sure it's not that simple, but it's been made to sound that simple, um and managed technologies has done it with other places. Where they have needed to restore off of the virtual and they've done it where they've had to restore off of physical servers alone. And that's where the weeks to days comes in.
Yeah, which we can't afford.
I couldn't imagine paying bills by hand or payroll and payroll is the most important one.
Moving on. Town Hall does too, I saw it the other day, so we're not the only ones with the typewriter.
Well, we have two. Um the police department is requesting a replacement of the Tahoe, the Tahoe is a twenty thirteen vehicle. Uh it's the oldest of the fleet now, um the convict they don't really use, it's a real backup, backup. The Tahoe, um as presented from the PD is the only vehicle that really has high enough clearance. To go down when lower main floods.
That's right.
Um it's also a big vehicle, we have explorers, they would like to have one, you know, larger utility vehicle. But the cost, you know, the vehicle itself is roughly fifty to fifty five thousand. And then you have all the updating, you need brand new computers, um and all of that, you're looking. Um, seventy to seventy-five thousand when it's done. There's one Charger and two, uh, two Explorers.
When we get, we can, uh. Uh, auction off the Crown Vic.
The one waiting to get picked up, the one that was already, there's one waiting to go into auction, the one that was wrecked. Something for them.
And then the, the Tahoe, so Larry structures it so that there's three vehicles, one for each four and then a spare. So usually has three, uh, in good shape vehicles and one as the backup, so the twenty thirteen Tahoe would actually probably be the backup.
At this point, with the number of times we're seeing flooding on Lower Main Street, getting and deep flooding on Lower Main Street. Think getting a taller vehicle is smart. One of the questions I have, and I don't know if this is a you question or a Larry question, is. How this fits in with the process of the county upgrade on the CAD system. Um. Wh- what that looks like in timeline, if it makes, does it? It's kind of a ridiculous question, because I don't actually know what I'm talking about with the police car computers, but does it make sense to do, to purchase a car with a computer now that's being updated?
Larry has been informed of the specs needed for the CAD system.
Okay.
Um, they are rather basic specs, um, that Managed Technologies is aware of. Um, and we would purchase a laptop for the new Tahoe if the new Tahoe was purchased. That meets the criteria. It's, it's very simple, one is that it, it needs to have, um, a GPS in the computer. You know, very basic stuff, we're not talking, um, very technical. Um, does Managed Technologies do the, put in the computer in the car, or is that done by somebody else? It can be done either by Managed Technologies or by the upfitter who does all the police specific stuff, equipment in the car.
In the past, we've had usually the upfitter, and you know, then Anthony, once everything's, the equipment's been installed, then Anthony does the programming. Whatever's necessary, moment.
And the reason that you have, my recollection from the last time we discussed police vehicles is that you. Um, we think not about mileage so much as hours on the engine, right, and how, how long they are running. Um, so that just, is the vehicle we're looking at? We're, are we still in a situation, the situation that we were in where vehicle availability is limited? And are we yet in a position of looking at alternate fuel? I know some Westchester communities have gone in that direction, I don't know if it's in a place that we can afford to do yet.
That would have to be a question for Larry, he would have to speak to, um, what kind of vehicles he would like to see on the fleet.
Which is fuel like electric?
Or hybrid.
The, the thought, um, for now was the Tahos, there are some available. We would do a mini bid and we would request on a mini bid from the state, using the state vendors. Um, we're looking for Tahoe with these bare minimum specs. Um, we would like immediate delivery, and if you don't have immediate delivery, we'll accept a bid for a made to order one. Um, there are some dealers lately who have been doing that, they stop police cars, so that you can order one that's already made. We're not gonna go out and bid one that we know is sitting there, you put out generic stuff and then a couple dealers that might have it. Um, but there are some that could be out there, and there might not be any. But we won't know unless we bid it, and then if we do bid it and there's something out there, then it could be potentially, you know, delivered by May thirty-first. In the past, uh, police vehicles have been budgeted for, on a three-year payment plan. But a three-year payment plan on an Explorer looks a lot different than a payment plan on the Tahoe. Um, so we could, I mean, we could pay it outright, um, but if we didn't want to do that, put, you know, fifty percent down. And then finance the other half, and then it would look more appropriate as an Explorer would, or a smaller vehicle.
Okay.
And that's what might be a way to get the bigger vehicle.
I think too, we're, we've, this is another one of those things that we've. We're changing our thinking on, I think, which is. You know, previously you'd buy a vehicle and run it into the ground, whether it was highway or sewer or. Um, police, um, and we end up spending a lot of money on maintenance, you have the maintenance records for the two thousand thirteen, right? Um, that would be great to know, to, to share that out, um, but getting us on a regular. A regular schedule of replacement, so we're not dealing with vehicles with multiple failures.
And then if you, you do speak to Larry and come up with, you know, specs for an alternative fuel vehicle. Um, as long as someone specs it out, we can put it up on mini bid and see what it comes back at.
I remember that last time, sorry?
It's gonna be a higher price for the alternative fuel vehicle, um. One, one question I have is if we have one Charger, two Explorers and, um, one Tahoe. Um, but we really only need three vehicles, is that, was that what you said? Like two are, you know, in alter, in rotation during.
We are so, uh, right now, and Larry can speak to it better. Generally speaking, there's one car that's works the midnight tour, there's one car that works the day tour and one car that works, um, the afternoon tour. And then the fourth car, typically the oldest one, which is usually ten years older or more, is the spare, you know. Cars can be oil changes, go in the shop, things like that.
Right, why can't it alternate between two cars?
If you, my understanding is that if you go between two cars, you'll need to replace the cars quicker because you're using them more frequently. Right now, we've kind of gotten into a replacement every three years and it, it's been working and then it's a twelve-year program roughly. If you start using more cars more frequently.
And then you also have to think about weekends when we have multiple, or events when we have multiple officers. On duty, some are on foot patrol, some are in vehicles, there, there's ti, there are times when there's more than one vehicle on the road, not, not huge amounts of time. Um, but events, so. Um, it would be, it would be useful to see, to have a look at where we are with. Maintenance and how that looks for each of the vehicles to get a sense of, are we, are we making an improvement over time by being more regular about replacement?
That's what I have for my list of ideas and things that I've heard, you know, the board talk about, are there any other ideas? Um, running down the village lab repair.
Um, I have a list, I'm gonna keep my mouth shut and let everyone else go first.
I'd love to get the tunnel. Not a big one, but yeah.
We need to get an update from Bugsy on where the, they were, they had two more, two more spots they were chasing.
Yeah, I feel like we could wait forever for that tunnel to stop leaking, and I think we should just scrape it and paint it on a dry day and. Replace the mural and accept that it's gonna leak until they tear the thing down and, and fix the actual problem behind the wall.
Well, there's not, there aren't many spots left, so it's not, and they're not in the middle of the building, they're at the bottom near the stairs, so it's an isolated area, and you could even. In theory, you could paint around that location.
Yeah, or just paint it when it's dry and it'll be dribbly there when it's dribbly, but.
We could eat a waterfall into the dribble.
Charger painting, you can get creative.
Are you willing to, to get bids on that, so we have a sense?
Um, so, yeah, that's, yeah, the question is, how do we wanna go about that, is, is this an artistic project? Or is this, um, just a painted, get it done kind of thing?
There, there is.
By May first, right?
May thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
There are. Hyd, there are hydraulic issues that we need to, you, you don't just put latex paint on the wall, right, there's, there's preparation that has to happen first. Um. Aquatic cements, et cetera.
We would fit out to get that done.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, uh, let's talk, let's talk to Bugsy, it's, if he's got the time, it's something they could do.
Right.
Um, but I don't know how that would fit into his realm of things, it would be really, it's so depressing down there.
So that's not an expensive item to pick up this time or budget, but something that should be done, I would hope. By May thirty-first anyway.
It'd be so great to start the summer season with it over, now that we've got the water mostly under control.
Did you say that the, um, the pier lights were? Yeah. Dock lights, yes. Um, is that something? Did we have a bid on that, and, or did we have, we have specs on it?
Compiling, we asked Jay, we had, there was the possibility, there was the possibility of a donor doing them. Michelle raised very reasonable concerns about the village accepting, or, or, um, being part of the solicitation for a donation. Especially at that magnitude. Um, and I think frankly, in, in, given the, the circumstances around it, it's best for the village to. Stand on its own feet and be accountable to itself, um, for the lights. James Hartford is putting into a memo form, he actually just drafted it, I got it this afternoon. Um, the three products he's looked at, including direct replacement of the ones that are there. Um, another model, and a third that is more vandal resistant and has a higher inundation rating. So they can, they can be underwater longer, clearly that's getting to be more and more important. Um, he has a recommendation among them, he recommends that we get a sample, they're about a thousand dollars each, get a sample. Make sure that it's gonna work and sit to, and then order the rest. Michelle's recommendation was that that, we should talk about. The, ultimately the sample leads to a purchase, we should talk about that as a. Single recommendation, so he's putting all of that information together into a, um, a recommendation for us to look at. Next. Um, Big Bellies.
Yeah.
There's Catherine's numbers from last year were around, uh, five thousand each, if we said maybe six thousand each. I don't know what, I don't know what the costs have shifted, but I would love to put one at the dock and one. To begin with, if we have the money to do it, at the corner, the heavy food corner. Near the pizza place and, and, not Angelina's, um.
Cold French pizza?
And pizza and Angie's. Um, those were the consistently overflowing ones last year.
The front of the coffee shop, it's really bad too.
What were you gonna say?
If the five or six thousand per unit include the annual maintenance contract?
Yes, I have the on my desk. And Royal will service them. Um. I have another thought for garbage, but that's for next budget season, if we're talking about small stuff, we can knock off. Now, and.
They would have to be voted out.
Yeah.
Multiple vendors for Big Bellies.
I have to say that I've got a new phone and everything has like. I didn't get an answer, remember I told you I had a email, I don't know if they sent it to my village email, there's nothing in my regular, so I, I got the number from, uh. From Jeff yesterday to get my stuff up, back up.
Um, what, what I'm hoping to is you can talk to them about, if any of them are state bid.
That, that was my question, like, what did?
Can't be the only municipality that has.
What did Ryan do, how did they, that was my question specific to them. So, um, I think we'll get that.
That would be two new Big Belly or three total?
I mean, it depends on how, what other things we want to do, I, I had in my head the idea of two, one at. The, the, one at the dock and one at the busiest food intersection.
And we already have one coming from the, at the dock or no?
We had talked about one, we haven't ordered it yet.
Okay, so two total.
As we talk about garbage for next year, I want us to price out adding another day's pickup. And see if that's something we can, we can manage, I don't know, we have to see the numbers.
Um, what about a meter machine?
That's, that's on my list too, is.
A meter machine, so, you know, the idea is like the horse, horse in the cart, right, but like, if we can't collect the money, then we can't. Then, so, and, and I, the, the one feedback I've heard from everybody is like, what if your. Meter app doesn't work and every time I try it, it never works. So having a machine physically in front of village hall, I think would solve a lot of problems and. Potentially physically bound by the municipal laws.
I, I think we have to, I mean, we've put it off before, I could see so much lost revenue if we don't have an option of a place for people to go. I mean, ultimately, we probably need several at different locations.
Yeah.
Um, but if we've got, if we can find money for one, then at least we've got something and locating it centrally in the district.
Do we still have one down at the parking lot that's not being used?
I don't know if it can re.
Activate.
It's been removed.
It's been removed.
So.
Is it, is that one, oh yeah, work with Park Mobile in the municipal law, no.
So I'm, I'm looking into companies that would provide us with the meter reader, like the, for the enforcement officers.
Yep.
And one of them has like physical machines, and I'm assuming they all integrate with Park Mobile, because Park Mobile said these people work with. So if we could find an elegant solution that integrates the machine, that reader and the app, that's where we wanna go, I mean.
And allows you to enter by plate number rather than base number and.
Right.
I, I think it's sort of crazy not to have at least one, and then when we, as the revenue. Hopefully, as the revenue comes in, we have capacity to add more, I mean, let's be clear, I'm not talking about. A meter on every block, but I think we have to space them enough that they're easy to be preferable to get to.
Right, and this is something we would have to bid out, three contractors, even though there may only be one that can do what Park Mobile.
Well, will do. Park Mobile gave a list of over three contractors that can do the enforcement and the parking meter. I didn't go through them and match them all, but the two that they use the most definitely does both, but there might be a third vendor that also does both. Uh, Park Mobile, but yeah, um, the last parking meter, I wanna say. Eight or ten grand. I think this closes to ten grand, we financed it. Um, so, you know, if you're looking to purchase two, definitely, um, I haven't looked at state contracts. Um, I could take those two vendors real quick that Park Mobile and put on a state contract and see if there is one, and then that would avoid the, the quote.
Can I ask a question about that? Um. We have been talking on a cash basis all evening. When the decision was made to finance. That meter, what did that look like? You were, you were, it was financed through the manufacturer, financed through the bank?
It was run through a bank, but I don't know if the bank. It was purchased before I started, so I don't know if the bank was in partnership with the meter. Or if we found the bank, I'm not sure, there's also times when we say finance, but. There may not be interest charges, sometimes, um, they just extend. Like, like Toshiba, it's called the lease, but they're not charging us any interest on the copier for the length of the.
Period lease, yeah.
Um, so there's those things to consider, um, but it, it would be the board deciding if they wanna extend payments or.
I'm just wondering if there's an option for something like that that would allow us to get more than one from the get. Um. That's, that's, it's like, it's the kind of, it's the kind of debt that allows you to live in a house, to have a car, it's not.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't think we found this bank, I'm gonna say it came from a. Meter company, because it was some bank in Kansas, I mean, it was.
AS Bank.
Yeah, we were like, yeah.
Sounds really sketchy.
Had an actual coupon booklet?
Oh, wow, okay, um, that seems like it's worth looking, looking at, um. You can imagine. A couple of locations on Upper Main and eventually a location on Lower Main.
Um, I think financing and debt is good in some ways, it definitely helps with. You know, the cars and to keep that debt payment in there. Um, when we're talking about fund balance, if we're, we're not doing big, large projects. Um, that there'd be pushed off another budget cycle, it may be worth it to not have that reoccurring payment. Brought out, right, depending on when delivery would be, you know, if delivery is gonna be after June first. You know, maybe one we could pay outright, one we finance, um, but if it could be, all this can be done in the next twelve weeks, and it's something the board really wants to get ready for the parking. Then, you know, that's, assuming it's ten thousand, that's a good twenty thousand right there.
Wanted to really work from the beginning, as, as best as we possibly can get it working so that it. It's accepted.
So ultimately, where would we need the most, right in front of village hall? For the lower central and then something further up? The hill, further down the hill?
What about for? I don't know why I was saying, but, but some, something like near the bathroom.
I don't know why I was saying, but, but some, something like near the bathrooms, like that sort of thing, like, you know, a, a, a central location and then another one further up, because I feel like where we are is a little bit in betweeny.
Straight in the middle range.
So maybe, but, but we can't, yeah, I mean, I think it has to be, we want people to use them.
Yep, so
We're gonna be paid, like, yeah.
That's not a bad idea.
So, um, if, Eliza, if you're working on this, you wanna start the free room cost, you know, that will drive how many as well? Um, I know we could follow up with a separate uh, conversation on how many.
Ultimately, we have to have the, the numbers that we don't, with some of these numbers we know, some don't, don't, we need to know all the numbers, throw them in a, in a bucket and see what we can, what we can do. And prioritize, but you're putting, we are all putting, but Eliza especially is putting so much effort into getting parking finally off the ground, I think everything we can do to do it right.
The handheld enforcement, um, my understanding is a couple of thousand, north, probably like eight to ten thousand.
For each tree?
Holy, that's what I thought a quote was years ago. You know, technology has changed in five years, things are easier, different companies, you know, when we had the first parking meter, um, there were a lot of fees and now with technology, Park Mobile has less fees.
Yeah.
They pass some of the fees on to the user, less that the village has to absorb, um, things may have changed since then, um, but it, the idea would be it's not just for parking tickets and it's gonna print tickets and someone's on the spot, it's, it's gonna make the program or the parking plan successful.
Enforcement possible, right, because you scan and keep walking and you get them all and you can do, you know, the whole area in an hour rather than five hours.
It sounds like the, the pool that we're landing on, I think is lights, what meters, parking meters, um, dock lights, big bellies. Server. Uh, wrote the roadway prioritization. Study. Does including that in the meter list?
Roadway study, was that right, or, or the
It's the roadway prioritization project. Um, and then having Han prepare, spend money on having Han prepare actual bids for other projects. Jeff made a really great point yesterday that I've been sitting with a lot, that we have traditionally our board and other boards have thought about all of our buildings separately, rather than I thinking of them as a whole, as a set, a set of assets and, um, identifying all the things that need to happen in each building and then picking among a, a, a top section across all the buildings, rather than trying to do everything in one building at a time, obviously with village halls a little different because we have the sanding money to be able to do a bigger chunk. But I think that's a, that's a worthwhile process to do, um, and, and work with, with Han on bidding, to get to knock some of the big ones out, oh. Um, the doors, the security upgrade, I mean, I still don't have numbers from him. He just rescheduled for a site visit, I asked him to include cameras at the dock and at Mayor's Park and the assessment to see what the pricing is. We're spending almost fifteen thousand dollars on the lights, I agree, my feeling is we need to have cameras at the dock to see if somebody's screwing with the lights, we can talk about it more, but, um, he's coming on the ninth to assess numbers. If that, that's a major investment for us.
The, the doors, you know, if, if doors are still a lead time, you know, I don't know if any of them would be in stock, some of them are custom.
Yeah, I'm, I'm skeptical at this point.
You know, if, if, could it be started? I was gonna say, if there's two orders, if there's an in-stock order and a custom-made order, you know, that's cool too. Um, we would look at the project together though, you know, so if the doors are gonna cost fifty thousand or whatever, we're not gonna separate it to go under the threshold or whatever it is. But we could do a partial order.
All as one, do a partial order.
Partial order, the same way you would do partial work on streets, you would bid down a progress payment or something like that.
Well, I think, um, I think having the, having the bid is reasonable by the end of the and potentially some
Anybody else?
I am never going to be in support of security in public parks, it makes sense at doors of the village hall and in places where security is really important, I think taking away the autonomy and the sense of, you know, freedom and like not being watched in the spaces where people go to relax and I, I, I think it's bad, I, I will never support that.
I think we have to balance that against the capital investment in the lights.
Why would you get ones that are less tamperable?
We are, but it's still, it's, it's still a fifteen thousand dollar investment and again, just for clarity and the record, we're not talking about cameras that are actively watching, right, these, we look at the cameras, if something happens, someone breaks a light, we look at the camera to see who did it. Last year we had the gangplank for, um, C Street thrown off the dock. People were stupid enough to post about it online, so we identified that, if we had a camera, we so I don't, do, do others have share the same concern?
I do not, I share the concern of investing in infrastructure and spending taxpayer money and having it be destroyed and having going for weeks, years, whatever it is now with broken light, I think that's that to me is more hazardous than having a camera that can catch someone doing something wrong and not watching someone who's eating a sandwich, creating a sandwich, you have nothing to worry about. If you're breaking something and it's physical property that we own, you have something to worry about.
Well, and then there should be, in my view, there should be a consequence for damaging public property. Also, if you're, I mean, if you're concerned about who, who like everybody should stop caring their phones, if they're concerned about surveillance, we're surveilled all the time, I'm sure that tonight I will have in my Facebook feed advertising for security cameras, we are surveilled, and I, I don't say, I'm not saying that I like it, but it's not like you're gonna sit on Mayor's Park or in dock side and be free from anything else that's already watching you, so to have the capacity to recover damage when it's done in the parks is important to me.
In favor of the cameras, thank you, we don't wanna have to replace them again and be in dark while we're waiting to replace them, so needs, we need to protect our resources.
So maybe we should also get, um, have Anthony revisit, one of the reasons that it didn't happen before was he was restricted on he, he was asked to work with, within a framework of not upgrading, I'm not explaining this well at all, but now clou- cloud, in the same way that our server has cloud-based alternatives, the cameras have cloud-based alternatives that might not require, you know, there was, it was the wifi issue, right, that's why they didn't get upgraded it.
No, it was taken out of the budget and the funds were used somewhere else, that's why it wasn't
Not last year, I'm talking about in the, in the past.
From a technology.
From a technology standpoint, right?
Two options, one was that you'd have to go and get the chip reader or chip from the cameras and those are ones that aren't like constant surveillance, so it's only if an incident happens, then you check it, which I feel more comfortable with personally. Then the other option was this, ones that have wifi constantly streaming to the officer's phone and, um, you know, the officers can look at it whether, you know, whenever they want or whether there's an event or not. But, so that one leaves a little bit more, like, much easier use, but, um, much easier abuse.
So let's, let's clarify on that, that it is a stream, so the duty phone, first of all, our duty phone is a flip phone. But also, my understanding was that, 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 that it was a setting that could be used for, um, uh, emotion detection within our ranges, let's, let's get clear, so we know what it is we're talking about, what the options are. And have a conversation about it.
Why isn't there a budget for a phone from like this decade?
They actually have, my understanding is they like the flip phone, I, I've asked Larry before, why don't we get, get you a
Because they would be scrolling and Facebooking.
I think there was a concern of, yeah, I think there was a concern that, that the, um, camera had been, I mean, the phone had been damaged, right? In the past.
Drop a flip phone and I'd have to replace it every time.
So let's buy them an Otter Box.
Yeah, I mean, there's like All sorts of new things that you can do and check that phone.
That's a, that's an expense that can be that could be the part of this year, right, get in a, the phone that they prefer.
Would have to ask the police if that's what they
That, that's what I mean, ask what they want, because there's a reason they still have a flip phone.
They have, they're in a vehicle with a computer that has wifi and they have access to the internet.
It could be streaming to the computer, you know, like, that's one of the camera options, it may stream directly to the computer, you use the app on a computer rather than a phone.
And of course, one of the advantages when you have vandalism at Mayor's Park, for example, is if you know that the vandalism is happening, you can get there to address it. As opposed to finding it two days later, which is the situation we're in now. And then scrolling through hours and hours and hours of footage to see when someone crosses the camera.
Right.
So let's, let's find out, let's get better information.
Water and sewer rates. Moving on, somebody's gotta keep moving, I'm sorry. Water and sewer rates, uh, the usage was raised last year for the first time in quite a number of years. Uh, there was a topic of discussion, and should this be an incremental passive inflation, if you will, recurring um, increase and not, or should it just be when the fund needs it or something big, um, you know, sewer in the past, if you look at the flat rates, some of those raises poorly to when a new bond was issued to make the bond payment. So that's just something to consider, um, flat rate, usage rates, percentage, anything.
What was the price per gallon that it raised last time, right, I mean, it was like, was it noticeable to anyone?
So
Maybe in the whole year, usually went up twenty bucks?
The sewer rate went up eleven and a half cents per thousand gallons, was a ten percent increase. The water was fifteen cents per thousand gallons and that was roughly a five percent increase. For the majority, for seventy percent based on the twenty-one, you, for the twenty, twenty-one usage, about seventy percent, they saw a ten dollar increase overall.
My feeling is that water and sewer are commodities and they have value and they have, they're, they increase the cost to us every year. Um, and it makes sense that you keep some kind of regular adjustment to meet those costs. But also, it does not the shock value of having to raise for the first time in six years or eight years, whatever it might be.
And when we did that, it was only eleven and a half cents for a thousand gallons anyway, so it, it's such a small amount that is unnoticedable, but it makes a big difference to our water and sewer budget. So I support it.
One question, um, year over year last year to this year, because we had people, we had water restrictions. Did it lower the income by, by how much?
I don't monitor the usage per se account by account, I mean, we could, um, I did see some of it go down, Matt did too. But we also are seeing some income go back up with the installation of new endpoints. Some properties that were underestimated are now have that one-time fee, um, so I think it may have been more of a wash. Um, than anything, I don't think it would be a less in the revenue.
Show us on so far into the weeds on sorting out endpoints and meters and getting it right. Um, and you've recovered, you've recovered a, a lot of stuff that was missed, I'm really grateful for it. Perfect OCD project.
No, because it'll never be a hundred percent. So if the board has a recommendation on a percentage, I can build it into the budget, um, and make a decision on that. A three percent increase is, you know, four cents on the sewer, ten cents on the water, gives us about twenty-one hundred in the sewer and about sixty-four hundred in the water.
And additional revenue, sort of a two percent this can, is, is, um, sort of customarily a standard of, I mean, um, increases. I've hit the end of the night and I can't think of the words, cost of living increase, right, so three is not out of the range of that. Is there a um, do you have a recommendation from what you've seen in terms of expenses rising year on year, I mean, I know that the last few years have had a, you know, big rises. But what seems like a good match to what we generally see as an expense increases?
It's hard in the water and sewer fund because you have your basic reoccurring stuff, but a lot of the expense is like the one-time projects when we fix something, in some years, you know, a two thousand dollar pump goes and in other years a ten thousand dollar pump goes or something like that. Um, so built into those budgets are those repairs, um, and the thought is, you know, you don't know, you, Matt's trying to get on a replacement schedule. Um, but sometimes it's just doing emergency repairs and sometimes by the time you get to now, it's like, okay, I have some savings, what can we do? Um, but I can't put a number on it because it's, well, how much do you wanna budget for those contingencies, like we make sure that the year-over-year stuff is covered and then it's the plant improvement. I will say, I looked at a couple of other water and sewer districts in Plutnam and Duchess that, um, are published. And at a quick glance, our usage per thousand gallons is less than other water
Cost of usage.
So, uh, water is you know, in the three dollars and thirty cents, sewer is one twenty, a dollar and twenty-eight cents. Other places you're looking at five, six, nine dollars per thousand gallons.
Can you say those numbers again?
Uh, the sewer, currently the sewer usage is a dollar and twenty-eight cents for a thousand gallons. And water is three dollars and thirty cents for a thousand, for a thousand.
Three dollars thirty?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Three twenty for what?
Three twenty for water and one twenty-four for sewer.
Thousand again.
Yes, those numbers that I gave first were putting in a three percent increase.
So what, what are the municipalities you're looking at that are, where you're seeing those numbers? The water districts?
So like, one in Wapins, one in Fishkill, uh, their flat rates are a little lower. You know, so one in Wapins, the flat rate is forty-five dollars a quarter, but it's six dollars per thousand gallon.
For, for water sewer?
For water.
Double.
Our water flat rate is fifty-six. You know, per quarter.
Continental villages, that would be worth
I didn't see it closely.
But maybe that's something that the town would
So all these places have multiple districts, I just chose one on a list of ten, uh, the Merritt subdivision in Fishkill, um, thirty dollar flat rate, five dollars per thousand gallon.
These are also places with bigger populations. I, I don't know what difference that The same water.
Water availability for
A lot of the rates that I've seen have been consistent and then if the district needs a bond payment or re, a big revamp of a system, you know, that's when it's the like one of the systems went from a flat rate, they don't charge usage, one system in southeast, the sewer, it's two seventy-nine of a flat rate. It went up like a hundred bucks from the year before because they had to redo a major component of the system. So that was no phasing, easygoing, hundred bucks a year, like it is what it is. Um, and we're talking about the dams and the water fund.
Yeah.
And a five million dollar bond payment is not sustainable.
Yeah.
You know, there's alternative funding sources, hopefully subsidized borrowing, um, but if the village had to go out and borrow five million dollars over thirty years, it's half the water fund, not possible.
And that would be a much larger increase if for some reason it was even more of an emergency. It was even more of an emergency.
I wonder if it makes sense to choose. To choose comparable municipalities or water districts in terms of size. That's it.
But they don't necessarily have the.
They don't necessarily have the dam that we're taking care of.
I just did a quick Google search for twenty minutes before the. All over the place, um, trustee. Bozy had mentioned the idea of maybe tier structuring, um. I think Rhinebeck, maybe, there's a couple municipalities where they tier it based on usage.
Um, they do a flat rate based on usage or the.
The usage rate, so your first ten thousand gallons would. Just making up numbers, a dollar each, the next twenty thousand gallons would be two dollars each, um, don't know if our system can handle that. Um, but another thought so that.
Our system, you mean like our.
Our billing system.
Complicating things.
It's very complicated.
Right, but it, it is a brilliant model for discouraging, uh, overuse, uh, unnecessary usage.
For sure, um, for sure, um. I did speak with someone from the EFC yesterday after responding to the, um. Would you, would you like a private, um, consult to see what you might be, remember the email on EFC, yeah? Um, there, there seem to be more possibilities through EFC that we may be. Um, eligible for than we thought, they've asked for. Um, a written description and, and more detail of the project. Um, regardless, there's going to be some combination of grant. And, and subsidized loan, but we're still gonna have to pay something out of pocket and I wonder if it doesn't make sense. As you're suggesting, sort of plan that in. Leading up to, right, we have, we have a five-year window in which we're trying to do this, to not draw on the aqueduct at higher rates. To set sort of a, a plan of reasonable increase over five years so that we're all. Contributing toward. The dam expenses as a, you know, as users as well.
We're able to build up the fund like that? For future.
I think that if we do it intentionally. Um, because right now, right, we've never intentionally built the fund balance, um, it just happens through cost. Savings, um, or additional revenue. Uh, the village may want to explore a restricted use fund in a similar way that. Um, a school district has a bus fund, they save up money to purchase buses. Um, their municipalities have restricted fund usage as well, so it's a component of the fund balance. Um, it's a legal setup, you put money into it, it can only, it can only come out for the intended use. There's no option of using it for something else.
I mean, I think every option has to be on the table for this.
Has a separate banking account, the village hasn't done it for, um. I think sewer repairs years and years ago, um, because they have a sewer reserve fund, um. That if, I wouldn't want to intentionally build fund balance for the sake of it without doing it with the reserve fund.
You mean, without this type of fund you've just described?
Because then a reserve fund allows you to build it up.
Yeah, well, then, then you have built-in accountability and segregated fund and.
Is that, so if we were to build, start to build increases now over time. Do you literally start at zero or can you transfer some of your fund balance?
I don't know enough about it to answer that, but I can look into it. Um, but the.
Standard deposit.
Yeah, but the other thought on that is. Why would we want to restrict ourselves if we don't have to? So we, we start this reserve fund that's restricted, even if it only grows to say fifty thousand dollars, we know fifty thousand dollars goes to the dam. We can still take money out of the regular unrestricted fund balance to pay for portion of it if we wanted to. Um, I'd be hesitant to restrict savings already. Um, without knowing, you know, prepare for emergencies, without knowing what's coming down. In a few years.
Maybe it's not something to do five years out, but maybe two years out?
Putting new, um, putting new money in is okay, I'm saying taking existing savings, I wouldn't. Because it's like right now, you could put in, you could use it for anything. I don't, I wouldn't want to limit our emergency files anymore.
God knows, there's always something breaking at water and wastewater that needs addressing, so.
That would be definitely supportive, setting up a restricted fund balance from going forward.
And I have to look into it, if the water and sewer fund can do it, obviously the sewer fund can, water fund. Has some differences that can happen in the general fund, so I don't foresee a problem in the long term.
Check it out.
I want to look into it more before, apparently we could definitely do it.
And then maybe having a sense of more comparable. If there are more comparable water districts that are dealing with. Dams, et cetera, and I mean, if we're that far off. That's really far off. I'd want to get a sense of other municipalities as well, but those two examples are really striking.
Plus, these are a little less though.
That's true.
Maybe, maybe the way to look at it is what the average household pays. For the, for somebody who's paying forty-five dollars flat and six per thousand gallons. What's their total bill, like, on average? So that we can see what the comparable household water bill is, water and sewer bill is. And see if we're in line as opposed to being in line on flat rates and per gallon, or per, per thousand gallon.
It's the same thing with the taxes, um, you can do it in like bands, um, but there is a large. Disparity between the highest user and the lowest user, there always will be, um, but even if you take. You know, we all make assumptions, um, you assume that a condo is a smaller than a house. Some condo users use more water than, you know, a three-bedroom house, it's lifestyle. Um, so we can look at it maybe in bands, like how we look at, you know.
Yeah.
The taxes from a hundred to two hundred thousand of this, I saw you on gallons. Like that to get a, an idea, but the majority of the Cold Spring residents are not. It's the businesses and things like that.
One particular trustee emeritus.
Moving on.
Don't take my water away.
So I'll look at a three percent increase just when we're budgeting for now to start with on the water and sewer revenue. Um, are there any grants that the board is aware of that we would need to have matching funds that we're trying to pursue?
Um, so. And we're talking about in the next budget year, not before May, right?
Either one.
So, uh. Mayor Winward and Trust Supervisor and Taskline I met, and also Legislature Montgomery met with the Department of State. Um, to, to find out about available. Consolidation studies, um, and I think one of the ones that we have to responsibly look at is, is highway. Um, those are spend-out, uh, reimbursement grants, so we would need to plan that money ahead. I don't know enough yet to speak. In an informed way about this, but the, the rough idea was that all three municipalities would qualify for a portion of the cost. To look at bringing the departments together. Um.
Is there a matching component? I'm less concerned about the village putting out and getting reversed. The actual funding that we put out as a match for.
I need to confirm. My understanding was that it was a spend-out payback, but I'm, I want to make sure that that's right.
So a hundred percent.
And we do remember that it was twelve thousand five hundred per municipality. I don't know how others feel about that proposal, but I think that's, that's one of the things that we have to think about in terms of efficiencies.
It's totally efficient and it frees up the water.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, I mean, we're often using the same. Like, we're cross-functioning and working together and it, it just makes so much fun.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it, it makes a lot of sense too, but I also just caution for those listening and those. Wondering like what that would mean, uh, we're not talking about getting rid of people and we're talking about consolidating services and resources. Into a single unit, not.
Well, that's, that's part of what needs to be looked at is how do we maintain service level? In the village where we have population density, if you assign, is there a team that, that's assigned as the village team?
Right.
Um.
So this grant looks like a feasibility, like a.
It's like a feasibility study for, for consolidation. And it also may not, yeah.
Some really cool stuff.
Yeah, right, without, without data, you don't know.
Our last revenue portion, I should have mentioned it with the tax levy, uh, so Lo Sap is the Fireman Service Award. Uh, that's on everybody in the village's tax bill, um, it's a small part of the tax bill. Uh, the Lo Sap contribution, uh, has, it was really high a couple of years ago, it's come down into the thirties. Um, it's a little high now, I think we should drop it by three thousand. Um, it's, it's a penny per thousand, that's value.
You meant literally a penny with your.
You're not going to see a big savings on the tax bill, you actually won't see it at all because that penny will go into the regular tax levy. Um, but it's something to note, um. So that when we talk about, you know, an increase, make sure you take your couple pennies of savings from the fireman service. And back it out of the increase on the other side. Um, so even if we didn't change anything, everybody's bill is going to go down a couple pennies. On the fireman service and up a couple pennies on the tax, there's two lines on everybody's tax bill. Um, just something to note, um. The Lo Sap, we've been very, uh, conservative in the country, contributions and. It's time that it comes down a, a couple thousand and it probably will have to go up in the future. When Penn Flex does these audit reports and that's where the guidance comes from on these numbers.
Um, may I ask you, um, it's nine now, I'm mindful that you need to drive home. Are you, are you comfortable still going?
So, uh, some of these potential new expenses, large purchases, we might have touched on. Uh, the first one, we'll stop, start with the PD and these are things that have come up in conversation, I've had preliminary budget meetings with. Most of the departments, uh, we're working on getting trustees scheduled, um, PD has met with myself and Tweeps. Um, Highway is on Monday, uh, Water and Sewer is also on Monday with a trustee. Um. And then, uh, I've been in contact with all the other departments about the smaller departments on their needs. Um, which aren't really much, so from the PD, which the board has talked about. The village was awarded a fourteen thousand dollar grant to start the body camera program in the village. Axon provided a quote, which Axon is now in state contract. For seven cameras over five years, it's forty-three thousand.
That's for the data management.
That is for the data management, it's for the licensing, it's for the equipment, it's also for new equipment in. Two times over the span of the contract, uh, so you get the cameras, the dock. Um, upfront, in two and a half years, you get brand-new cameras, brand-new dock. And at the end of the five-year contract, you get new cameras again, new dock. Um, it includes, uh, the warranty on it, um, as well, and then the data. Larry has a quote from Axon that I could forward to everybody. Um, the warranty and the re-up program is the most expensive component on it, um, but it ensures that. The cameras are always up to date, um, the battery, you can't just change out the battery, you have to send it back. So I've spoken to Larry about, you know, does he think that the warranty and re-up program is worth it? And he thinks that it is, after talking to Axon. And talk me through seven. Seven was the request that Larry put in on the state grant, so we had fourteen thousand from the state because it's two thousand per camera bundle requested. The village requested seven, um, so we would purchase seven.
So we can't switch it around, that's the number that we requested in the grant?
On the grant, um, there. I have not called the state, I'd be wary to call the state and ask them, hey, can we switch this when they've already paid us the money?
I know there's, I know there was logic in the seven, I just can't remember what the logic, it's a question for, it's a question for Larry.
Larry submitted.
And what had to do with charging and downloading and et cetera, et cetera, and thinking about multiple events when there's multiple officers on.
Right, I can imagine it takes cars, like, we need four cars. For those reasons, there must be a reason that he's coming up with seven, but seven does seem excessive and I feel like. When we discussed that grant, that was fourteen thousand for seven cameras, it sounded like a great deal. Went out after it and said, okay, let's apply for it and now suddenly what was fourteen thousand is forty-three thousand.
Well, not suddenly, it's always, the data management has always been the longer expense, the large expense, which is why previous boards haven't.
Right. At the time, I guess, and that was a little bit of a disconnect for me.
Okay, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was discussed as.
Discuss data management at that time, when we said, let's get that grant for free money for cameras. We can get seven.
Well, it's always been, I mean, as, as long as I've been part of conversations and watching conversations, that the dad, the data has always been. The, the point at which they pulled back from, from im- implementing a program.
Right.
Not instrumenting, implementing.
Well, it would be worth the ask to find out if, um, the funds could be. Moved around for, say, four cameras, uh, and then.
The grant specifically when applied for, said it was two thousand per camera bundle requested. Bundle being the equipment and the data and the startup fees and all that stuff.
I want to hear from Larry first about what the logic of seven is, because like Eliza said, there's surely logic.
But I'm going from the bright point of view, they wouldn't have given us fourteen.
We could be in danger of just losing that whole grant, if we, to go from seven to five. Yeah, typically with the state, it's not moving it around, it's okay, we're taking it back.
This is something that's, for me personally, very important, um, for accountability for our officers, officers and for the public, um.
That was what the public asked for in that survey, I mean, of all the things that everyone said they wanted was body cam, so. Not, you know, I'm not pushing against that as much as just like, oh my god, now we've got forty-three thousand, now I can spend.
That's why they don't take thousand, they should have taken point six thousand dollars.
Fourteen, so forty-three thousand take off for fourteen.
Physical.
Um, and then divide the rest by the remaining years.
So it's not as bad when you manage it that way.
That's a better way of looking at it, like.
How much is it next year?
Okay, we talked about Tahoe already. Um.
Um, so technology and software upgrades, um, additions, um, we've always talked about E, adding E code in. Um, that's over a three-year, I think E code was a three-year phase in, and then, you know, the, the STR management software. Has it been decided what, what kind of software features are really.
Turn to that conversation, um, I know Jen had done, that committee had done research on functionality. Um, and she had some conversations with you, I don't think we've closed the loop on the conversations, it seemed that there were. There were directions of which types of functionalities would be best suited.
Talked about it so many times, it's like, we, we continue to say like, we need this, this and this and this. And we've landed several times, I don't have it in the top of my head, but I could certainly like pull that list and be like, the cost.
We need two of the bids.
I think that on Granicus, we've landed on, you know, the board wants the, it's like a twenty-one thousand dollar package. And, uh, it's, it's how much revenue is realistically that twenty-one thousand bringing in? And are there comparable, um, software or is it on a county bid somewhere? You know, I have reached out to John first about piggybacking and, you know. People have asked about Scorswell and other national contracts and, um. I haven't really read into it, but it seems very sticky when you go outside of New York, let's biz.
Dutchess uses, um, Granicus.
Thank you. Um, if they're, they, they signed up with Granicus before Granicus was Granicus. They have had Granicus before they bought the STR component, when there were no other STR components going on at that.
What were they using it for?
They, there weren't these software companies doing STR management when Duchess started using them. So it may have been a sole source.
I see, I see what you're saying, okay.
Because I've done the research, I know that Granicus is not sole source, there are other companies, they might, may not be as robust, but there is at least one that. Services some of the very similar features. Services some of the very similar features as Granicus.
In my head right now, I can't, I can't recall the others that Jen had looked at, but we can follow up with her and. Get numbers.
Roadways and facilities. Uh, they are requesting two full-time new employees. To build that into the budget is a significant number. Does the board have feelings about that?
I think, I think this is the really, this is really tough. Um, because it's clear, you know, we took, took garbage off the plate, and we're still, we still have not been able to get far ahead with. The sidewalk work that we'd hope to do, the, the catch basin work that we'd hope to do. And we're stuck in the sort of this place of, do you bring in more people to make it more feasible, do you bid out more? If we're honestly looking at. How we function as a department going forward. I hesitate somewhat about adding, but I also see how much that crew is struggling on a day-to-day basis to keep up with the workload that they have. And, you know, I wonder if, if this isn't an interim step where we need additional people to get through a period. When, when there is institutional change or potentially institutional change.
I think about it as, if, if we were to move in that direction of, of consolidation, to build our teams that we have. Employees that already know the village and are ready to work, roll, that would be, um, a way to move in that direction. And prepare for that transition. Um, I also think that right now with the current staffing, as it's obvious, like they're trapped so thin that the manager, the management position. He's painting benches and, and doing the work that. He doesn't have time to do management, so like where he should be bidding out things and or like assigning jobs and managing workloads. Like, I don't even know how Bugsy possibly could, under the current situations, without more guys doing the actual physical labor, he's, you know. Doing things like plowing all night long, and we need his mind wrapping around like actual management of the whole system.
I like the idea of having them in place if the departments come together. Um, because that would. Spread out the cost of them. Throughout the, the town. Um, eventually, I think, because they wouldn't, I mean, there would be. Each municipality wouldn't be paying their crew, I don't think.
That's, I mean.
I don't.
I don't think so.
And, and so you'd have, as Eliza said, a crew that does know the village, but then you'd also have people that. Would be working, there'd be more people in the whole department and.
Well, I mean, it's clear that, it's clear that three people, three people aren't able to get four now, aren't able to get done. All of the things that need to be done.
No, because once, once it became clear that they didn't have to do garbage, all of these things that really do need to get done. Right, they need to come onto a list and need to get done.
Well, and part of that is, part of that is catch up from things not done, that's, that's been sort of hobbling. Sweeps, I see your brain turning over there.
I'm gonna hold off on this one. For the moment.
Sit with it?
Yeah.
From a budget perspective. It's huge, if you look at adding two people for highway, we talked about a person, full-time person to here. Making the assumption that everybody's going to need a family insurance plan.
Right, just a safe assumption.
You know, we're talking. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Not including any overtime.
Increase to the budget.
With three positions, so it would be two full, um, Bugsy, when I met with him, would be requesting, he calls like a, a lower laborer. Roughly eighteen an hour, a more experienced person, you mentioned a carpentry and mason, twenty-two an hour. Um, which may even be low for an experienced person like that, uh, and then the village hall, full-time deputy clerk. You put that, all three of those together, um, you know, you're at two fifty.
Another way to.
More ways for it, that included the sun.
Fund, right, but maybe, maybe, just throwing, we're throwing everything on the table, maybe another way to think about this is. Last year, we built out the degree we could, we built out the, the teams who are in the field. It's crystal clear that the team in the building. Needs, needs support. Um, and expand, so, so maybe we, maybe this is the year we do. Office staff, last year we did, we did field staff, maybe this year it's office staff, I don't know. But there aren't enough hands, sets of hands in the village to do the work, is what's real.
Do we have any idea of what we would bid out and what it would cost to, you know, to do that work, I mean.
Well, that's part of what we're working on.
It's what paying them costs over what bidding it out and getting it done by somebody else costs. If we, and those jobs, I mean, if you hire somebody, you can't just say, okay, you're off this weekend, you don't get paid, whereas. If we've got somebody, if we're bidding something out, we decide to bid it out and we decide to do the work, whereas, I mean, without people sitting around over there, they gotta work. They want to work.
And that's, that's, I think, that one of the primary considerations is, is, is benef, it's benefits, um. That's what, that's what, what breaks us.
I don't think that certain data projects will go away, they'll always have to be bid out for, you know, the village has some. Serious drainage needs and, you know, um, redoing, like we're talking about, like redoing curbs and slopes and all that stuff. You know, that is something that would always probably have to be bid out, sidewalks is something that could stay in-house. Potentially, um, you know, large scale paving jobs bid out for chips, um, you know, chips. As roles and things like that and. Um, talk about a small job paving in-house and depends on. The, the man hours, the expertise and what the department is capable of, um, so before we try and analyze what we would save or not save. It's, well, how many bids can we really not bid out?
Well, but that goes back to the question of management, like, if we don't have a manager who has the time to do those bids. That, this is what we saw this year, we made all these ideas, we had projects that we wanted to get done, like all lined up, we, we. And none of those bids went out because our project manager was like, busy like fixing benches and, and doing all of these little like. Busy work that like, it would be great if there was staff to do that, who are being paid, you know, well, the. Whatever rate they get paid, but, um, so that we, we need people who can make those bids to get the work done.
Well, or you look at it another way and say, we work with Han. And they, right, it's their, it's their, what were you, sorry?
But there's budget implications.
Of course, the budget implications, no matter what decision you make, it's, it's a matter of balance, I mean, we're not going to solve this problem tonight, but it's recognizing that. Getting work done in-house, we have, getting work done in-house has costs. Bidding out has costs, and you need, you need content expertise to get chunks of things done, I mean, the, the big, the big. Infrastructure stuff that we've got in front of us is so big, like, the, this, the. The Fair Street project is so big, you know, throwing on top of it the fact that it's under, it's below sea level, right? So, so then that's the whole question of pumps, I mean, they're really complicated. It's not just about having one more set of hands, it's like a, a much bigger question of plan of attack.
Now, you mentioned the benefits, that's another conversation that the board can have, um. You can't change the pension system, they dictate those kind of usually rates, you can't change FICA. Um, the vacation payouts and stuff is in the handbook, and the contribution to health insurance is in the handbook. Now, right now, employees are paying fifteen percent, but if, as the old handbook was written, it made changes to new people coming in. So grandfathered in your current staff to whatever the, you know. You know, handbook is, and you can make changes to current staff, um, but that's a, something to consider. You know, if you updated a couple percentage for new staff. Um, if you're really looking to hire four people, two highway, one village, one water and sewer, Matt was asking for an extra set of hands. Five percent, you're looking at, you know, nineteen hundred dollars for each of those people coming in. Small, but something.
I think the thing though, to consider is that one of the problems we've always had is getting. People to apply and the level of people that we want, so, I mean, at some point. It has to be an attractive job in order for two people to come on, or three people to come on, because they can get paid more, way more in other places, so. I mean, I, I, I hear you on the, you know, figuring out other ways to maybe manage it a bit more, but we have to make it, if we're going to go this route, we have to make it. We want to get the right people on board to do the work, we don't wanna.
If I get somebody with mechanical? Okay.
A lot of the mechanical stuff is now being done in-house, that was.
So that's why they want the lift?
Yes, but that, that person is a mechanic, but he's not, that's not a certi, he's a mechanic from LifeSkill. He's not a mechanic from certification, and I, I, I don't see particularly, given the conversations. That we want to have about forward, I don't see the point in making a capital improvement like that in that building. At this time. No, no, it's okay, but just like, that's, that's, that's a consideration is, do we have, do we have someone who is actually qualified to work under a lift? That is not clear to me, and. Is it worth us spending twenty thousand dollars on a lift when we can take a truck to Hatfield?
And to tweaks his point, if we're not going to getting the certified mechanic versus the like trade jacks. And he does great work.
Has rebuilt stuff that was sitting in the bushes for years.
Yeah, wow, um, y- you know. It's like, do we look for people who have higher qualifications and certifications and pay them better and get less people? But with like higher expertise, or do we continue just building out a crew of like. Able hands that can do many things without certified expertise.
I mean, another, another way to think about this. Is the rea, the reality of the job, right, we started calling them by the name. identifies what they actually do, right, dealing with roadways and facilities. Maybe some, some future reconfiguration is retention of facilities. People, right, because there's, there's always stuff that needs to get fixed around the buildings. Um, and, and shifting, shifting highway, shifting roadways, um, like, I don't, I don't know. We're not going to have an answer for this tonight, I think we're all, to the, to the, to the question, what do you think? Uh, we need to consider more, and we're not ready for an answer tonight, yeah.
Is part-time at all on the table, or?
And where did you land with, I had talked about, I had talked about, um, grass, bidding grass cutting. And Bugs seemed to think that. It would be more, it would be better to have a part-time person who would be available to do other things, right?
Um, that was my. Um, that. The, the amount of money that it would cost to bid out something simple. As grass cutting, although very time consuming, if you had a part-time person, you know, if it rained that day. You can get more from that person than simply grass cutting, so it was twenty thousand for every, for one vendor to cut the grass for three months. You can use that twenty thousand and probably get, you know, six months of part-time work from somebody.
As soon as you can get a person.
But that's something that, um, Eliza, we can, uh, talk about on Monday.
And so the part-time, the part-time summer help is not even in this calculus.
I have it, um, built into the, the draft. My drafted version of the budget, which is still very draft, and that's why I have not shared it. Um, is the crew chief, the two current laborers, the part-time laborer. One new full-time laborer, one summer help. But no, um, no jack, like no grass cutting at the moment. But I can add that in, I can add in the two people, I was just putting something, we're in the middle of the placeholder to see, um, where we land. Um, because I have to start working on individual line to have something to present in two weeks.
In the, um. Consolidation, uh, arena. By the time we did a feasibility study. How long, if the study said that it was a good thing for all the parties, what is the timeline on that look?
I don't know, right now, um, I think that it, there's, there are a lot of factors that need to be taken into consideration, like. Assets, distribution of assets.
Is it an ongoing grant, or is it part of the CFA that comes out in the summer? Cause that puts a timeline, that may, or may not put a timeline restriction on this.
It's an ongoing grant, um. I have, it's been a while, I think it was in the, where, where are we now? March, so it was back in, I don't know, September, when we had this initial conversation, so I have to go back and pull my notes and. And, and get new information again, but I think, I think we have to, we have to start the conversation somewhere. It's an uncomfortable conversation that no one has wanted to have, but we are in this very unsustainable place in this part of. The village budget and ha, and have to think about options. But also.
And the best use in the property.
Yeah, and that's a whole different, that's a whole different conversation, but yeah, that's, that, that creates possibilities in that area. But we need to make sure that we're maintaining the service level that people expect. And right now, we're struggling, we're struggling to provide, despite best efforts and heroic. Heroic efforts on the part of the team we do have, we're struggling to keep up, maybe this will look different in. Six months when we get a chunk of things out to bid. Um, but I don't, I don't see that, I don't see this problem ever going away.
The other thing too is, you know, this time of year, there's just certain things we can't get done. You know, like, I mean, you can't move the to-do list along with most of the.
Right.
Things on it or outdoor weather related, you know, concrete, plastic or asphalt.
Oh, right, things that take time to get done, I think that as we look at this past year and the amount that has been achieved. In terms of just initial assessing.
Yeah.
Um, and we see another year of actually action, because I think we've had a year of inaction, because we've been assessing really. And catching up to what hasn't been done for the past decade or more, so I think as we see stuff getting done, it'll all kind of make more sense. Right now, we're still like, kind of rationalizing it and trying to figure out how it's gonna land next year.
Yeah, I agree. Also, I mean, to that point, you know, getting, having a professional service. An engineering firm take on the responsibility of looking at the stuff that we, or passports or whatever have left on the shoulders of.
Three people.
Yes, it's kind of like, kind of insane, so there, I mean, I think we found out stuff that even, you know, maybe Bugsy knew and his heart. But like, now we have on pre, on paper, like the real, yeah, which is a very different place to be, which is almost more overwhelming. Because now we know all the issues, yeah, versus where we were kind of like, well, let's just hope that, that pothole doesn't turn into a sinkhole at some point. You know, like, which it might, yeah, so, I don't know, I mean, I, it's.
That's a fair point.
So it's just gonna take some time, um, I, I, yeah, I still think we should at least consider adding one employee. In a part-time, but, but, well, let's.
Start, let's start with that as a, as a starting point and see where the numbers go.
Water and sewer, almost done. Um, the Matt's also requesting an additional employee that, that would be. The Matt's also requesting an additional employee that, that would be supporting water and sewer. He's. Um, I would confirm on Monday, but his initial thoughts were more just like a laborer and after set of hands. Someone that um.
To be an operator.
Not operator, which is what we hired last year. He's looking for more. Set of hands to do entry level, to do things, um, you know, and if it's the right candidate, you know, let them go through the. Spooling, the certificates, earn their way. You know, Matt's looking to build someone from the entry level. But he needs, he's expressed concern for an extra set of hands to accomplish. You know, him and Scott and Jared have the knowledge, but sometimes they don't have the manpower. So talking to Matt on Monday more further about that, and the only other thing so far that he's put together. Is upgrading to computerized pumps. At the sewer plant, so the water plant, the majority of the chemical pumps. And other types of things can be controlled remotely, then he has upgraded them. As they break to better models. Um, this sewer plant doesn't have as much remote capability, it may not even have any. Um, so that's something that he would like to implement, you know, the pumps do need to be replaced. Do in any way, it's one of the preventative measures Matt would like to take, but while being preventative. Upgrade it, and then, so right now, the water plant, if it's, if an alarm goes off and it's something minor. He can open up the laptop at home and make a, an adjustment. Saves time, that saves a lot of troubleshooting, the system's telling him, oh hey, maybe this is a little too high, it's a little too low, can you check it out? He doesn't have that at the sewer plant in the capacity as it is at the water plant, and it's something that would be a, a value add.
Kind of, do we have a ticket? Item yet, or he's still compiling numbers?
Never priced out the numbers, um. It would have to be through, um, already the thing with the water plant, so it would follow integrated. It would be a couple thousand.
Like literally a couple thousand?
But it, it's something that those pumps don't need replacement today, but they will need within the next couple of years, but it. So that's why it's on the table. Most of the other water and sewer stuff is like all like breaking, we, we have to.
Yeah, yeah.
This is. You know, something that's not an emergent right now, uh, emergency right now, but.
Yeah, but also budget capacity.
So is it? The best way to do it is to computerize when you change the pumps?
Yes, because this, uh, the pumps have some kind of electrode and then sensor in the pumps at the sewer plant. And I'm generally speaking, when I say pumps, there are other pieces of equipment that may or may not have this remote capacity, but I know for a fact that pumps are one of them. So with the computerized system, it's not gonna remotely control the whole plant, there's still. But for the bare minimum, at least he could see what's going on on the computer and then make the call, let me wait till the morning. Run in now for the two hours.
I was also thinking that um. You have, you are able to do an excellent job describing jobs that other people do in a way that other people can understand. That's a tough seat to be in, to be explaining the, the water and wastewater requests. To laypeople when you're a layperson yourself in that field, so thank you for walking us through it.
Taking time. Other last big request that has come in so far is from the rec department, and that's to resurface. The basketball court into a multi-use court. The paving company that had done some minor repairs and a minor extension last year, had given a quote last year. Of fourteen thousand to just asphalt the whole court. That doesn't include line striping or anything, uh, when I spoke with Jeff. He's more concerned with getting the court, you know, in a usable spot, and then.
Moving its location?
No, leaving it there, where exactly where it is, but resurfacing it. Um, and then once it's resurfaced. He said that, you know, some people throughout the village, someone might have the lines for a basketball court and, you know, then the rec commission. You know, could maybe paint or get buy a model online, so instead of paying a couple thousand dollars for professionals. That paint professional courts, if it's just recreational and if not sanctioned for anything. You know.
And regulation court.
Sentals and, you know, rec is willing to work on that.
But you're nodding your head, is this a conversation that you had the other day? Yeah, met with them?
Yeah. And I think it's, I think it's a great idea, um, making it a multi-use court because. We have so few recreational facilities that are for things like that. Certainly there's ways to, to. To find savings by having our friends and neighbors paint. Straight lines on a court, that's, I think that's fantastic. But, you know, again, I think we should, if we're, if we're looking at all these pieces. Thing that the village owns and needs to take care of, this is one of those things, and it shouldn't, it's no less important. It's different. It's just as important and we have needs for villagers to have places to. Recreate and play and we have so few, so. I mean, it seems like a big number, but I don't know, maybe concrete is. Asphalt is cheaper now, or more expensive, I don't know, but.
And this is something that would be um, a good qualifier for the general fund project, one time.
They've been asking to do it for quite some time.
We've put so little money into our recreation fund and parks needs and, and improvements and it just, we, we don't. We don't do anything for that area and part of it is because we have a small budget and a lot of needs. But I think if we can, we should.
Yeah, agree.
That's the quality of life.
So this is for next year or can we spend it out of this year?
Either one, um, I thought about that.
We need to get a total and what we, we, we put a lot of things on our spend this year list, we need to get a total.
But the reality is still with twelve weeks. I, I counted some of the stuff we talked about before and it got to eighty-eight thousand. Yeah, but there's still, it's two hundred thousand. Um, that was budgeted to put repairs into village-wide improvements. Um, the fourteen thousand, it is, that was last year's, last year's quote was, I think, twelve thousand, um, he would have to get multiple quotes. The, the fourteen thousand also didn't quote for reseeding around it and things like that. So if it can get done, cool, um, if the board wants to move forward with it, I could email Jeff and let him know Jeff Motto. Or if not, we could wait and go through the budget process and push it off to an extra. Thoughts?
I'm all for moving it forward and getting it done, yeah, they've been asking for this for years, so. If, if they can get done, then do it, yeah, and if there's fun sitting there, then. Let's use them.
Do a vote on that, just so I make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to um, allocate funds from the fund balance for court resurfacing.
Home favor? Any opposed?
Then this will be pending the results of the quote that come in, and then the board will decide at that point. On whether to move forward a hundred percent with it. So that's all that I have, um. On one, on the, the little feedback that I received um, in an email. Um, that we didn't talk about is, um, Mary wanted a, a study for village restructuring. Is that something that you wanted to put into?
Yeah, I mean, this is another one of those hard conversations that people don't wanna have, but, but I think. We have to talk about sustainability, and I, I am not talking about dissolving the village for the record to be clear. Uh, what I am talking about is um. The sustainability of. Management. Um, central, central management for a staff and assets. And whether it is time to look at the possibility of. A village manager, a full-time village manager, but we don't have peaks and troughs. Between administrations, um, the staff have. Um, the staff have consistent direction, we happen to be a board that's spending a lot of time at village hall. Um, but that's not always the case, um, and the needs, the needs continue, and I, I think last transition was really striking. Um, of what can go, what can go south? If you, if there isn't a smooth transition from one administration to, for the next, thank God for Jeff and Michelle. But I would like to look at. Um, as other municipalities have, like, um, Irvington, like. Going blank, on the other look, Mount Kisco. Bronxville, to look at the management legislative model, where there is, where the board, the mayor and the trustees are truly. Legislative in function and the administrative piece. That frankly will be, is hard to get people to do. And to do it well. Um, so that, that gets carried in a management structure. We heard a. I can't remember if you were in the room or not, but we, at Nikon last year, there was a presentation about the model and, and the. Possibilities. Obviously, we don't, the salary for, for a, a village manager, we're talking about salaries, and we're talking. At least a hundred thousand dollars. Where, where does that money come from? I don't know long-term that it's, that it's something that the village can do, but we haven't actually. Asked the question and gathered the data.
And that would also too, so we're talking about the study that you brought up, and then if the village decided to explore it further. You know, there's a budgetary, but there's also the referendum.
Absolutely, but without, without information. There's, there's no, there's no way to make a decision. I think we have to have that. We have to have the conversation and look at sustainability going forward. And again, I am not talking about dissolving the village, I am talking about. Is it appropriate, is it feasible? To bring it, to bring in a village manager to do full-time village management and the board be truly legislative?
And in that case, you know, this, going back to the highway department discussion, like, having this person who's an overall manager. Like, meeting out sort of the task and, and seeing the whole structure, basically what you were doing. Um, but having them paid and having that job makes.
Right, so like, I happen to, I have the capacity in my family to be able to set aside my consulting work for a period of time. And, and, and do this job, but. There hasn't, there hasn't been someone full-time in the office before because of trying to balance work-life and, and office life, and the staff. Do an amazing job of keeping the village moving, but I don't know that long-term, given our asset load, given the, given the regulatory environment in which we work. Given the issues that we deal with, we're a small village that grows to a small city for a chunk of the year, right? We've got. We've got real issues that can't, that aren't, that have not been. Managed in ways that are sustainable, um, and I think that we're, we're, we're getting our feet under us here, but we have to be. We have to responsibly say. What happens next with the village and how do we position the, the village to succeed over time?
Right, and how do we avoid burning our mayor up?
Staff are carrying.
Less and less people want to step up. We have, but going forward. Speaking to sustainability, you just don't know who will step up, I'm, I'm sure there's a whole village out there of really great people. But you just never know.
Well, honestly, the range of, the range of skillsets that you might get, where you, there needs to be consistency.
How much would a feasibility study of that sort?
But we're talking about next budget year again.
So Warren Spence, why, that's it, and I said that was the last one, but there's just one more. Parking, do we really know when parking's gonna start so that I could budget it in a main street?
I mean, Bugsy's talking about getting poles put in, in the next. Week or, or you know, like, or two, like, he and I going around putting poles in. Um, we're putting in the order for signs. If we could get the machine kiosks in, I mean, my aim was for June. July at latest, that it starts. The problem is without those kiosks, how much are we actually gonna collect? Because I was looking at the budget of like, what our income is from the meters down at the lots. And like, how much were, how much we projected and how much we're actually collecting, were very, there was a.
No, and, and enforcement.
But there's a couple things, projected wise included, against my better judgment, I had to do it. Was that there was parking for Main Street revenue. Small, albeit a couple thousand per month. Peanuts compared to your projections, you did still a big chunk in the budget, that wasn't realized. On top of it. For whatever reason, the lot does not have as much revenue activity as it has had in the past. And I don't know why, you know. If you, we raised rates to a dollar fifty or I think two dollars, something on the weekends. So what I did was I took an average of the three years before we raised it, take, took into account COVID went down. We raised rates fifty percent, that number should go up fifty percent, and it didn't.
After the machine went away, cause I'm wondering if it's like Park Mobile happened and suddenly we're not making the revenue, cause it's not easy. To pay for your meter.
I don't know that for certain.
It would be good, it would be good to, to know if that was the correlation, because I think that our budgeting. Will hinge on that if that is the case. So, you, you, you know, that gives us all the more reason to invest in those machines.
Right, the other software also did lock capacity at any given time, the Park Mobile only gives. You know, how many transactions per day. The old system used to be able to see, you know, if a spot was occupied for a certain amount of hours and things like that, um, but transitioning to. License plate, you're going to lose that functionality, um. So I can see what I can correlate, but I won't have as. In-depth information as we may have had in the past.
Right, but it's like, what's the date we lost that machine and when did our revenue start dropping dramatically?
Forty Main Street parking agreement included in that. Revenue because, and, and should it be?
Parking, uh, forty Main is included on the parking lot revenue along with Hudson. So it has nothing to do with metered parking per se, which is its own line. Metered parking does have the forty dollar winter permit, um, but those have been pretty consistent. But it's in a separate line, so that's. But if the lot is full during the week because forty Main is occupying spaces. That might be a revenue, but that just kind of started.
I, I don't see that, I don't see that lot being anywhere near capacity.
Were people using it?
I don't know. Um, I, I would say as you're thinking about revenue into next year to be conservative, like. We really hope that everything's up and ready in, in July. But God forbid, it isn't, you know, I think in the same way that we did previously with. Can't remember what we did this with, but like saying, okay. We're hoping for July, but let's budget as if it doesn't start until X.
All right, and then what?
Right.
Just, just so we understand, say it's a wild success, it goes, it starts happening, just, let's fantasize for a minute. Um, and suddenly we have this extra hundred thousand dollars. How, how does that then distribute or does it go into the fund balance?
Go into the fund balance.
Um, and can we then move it if we need to?
So it would go into the fund balance and then can be reallocated next year. In the odd event that all of your revenue and all of your expenses are equal. And then you have this surplus of a hundred thousand dollars, you can amend the budget at the state level. But the odds of it being a true hundred thousand surplus, you know, expenses and revenues are constantly up and down. Um, but there is the option, if that money needed to be spent immediately. You can amend the budget, if it's a small amount, you know, it could be the revenues would just be. The expenses could be a little off or whatever, but there are options, um, but the majority of it, it's just gonna go into fund balance and then, yeah.
Get here next year and say, okay, we've got a hundred thousand dollars, what do we need to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm highly optimistic, by the way, for implementation, but I'm just thinking. Absolutely.
And then the same with over occupancy tax. The, the board can levy up to five percent, it's five percent, then that the board is working towards.
I would fully support that.
We haven't taken a vote on it, but I certainly support the full five.
Yeah, of course. But I think that's, that's much further out, you know, STR needs to be done first, right?
We covered everything that you wanted to cover.
You said that was the last one?
Yep, for real, that's right.
Thank you for spending all of this time. It's nearly ten. Um, there are three people left standing on Zoom. Any public comment before we adjourn? Hi, Michael.
Hi there, I'm Mike Turton with the Highlands Current. My only question is, when do you hope to have a first? Rough, uh, very preliminary budget with all, more or less all factors on paper. What's, what's the first? The next big step in the budget process before you got a, a rough budget?
Well, the deadline for the tentative budget is March twentieth.
March twentieth?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no other hands raised. This is. Most, are we, have we ending call?